This being Tuesday, May 24th, 6:35, I'm calling the meeting of the ordinance committee to order. I am Linda Vakin, the chair. With me on Zoom, I have Councillor Maldonado Velez and Councillor Kevin Jourdain. I expect the others may be coming in sooner than later. Planning Board is somewhat delayed in coming in. They've communicated to our administrative assistant. We will move to the public hearings once they come. In the meantime, I'd like to entertain a motion from a member of the committee to take up item 13 out of order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Item 13 is an order that a handicap sign be placed in front of 439 Beach Street for Louis Figueroa, placard number PL4620943. This particular request was vetted by the Disabilities Commission and our city engineer. And unfortunately, this particular address is a traveling, so it is not possible for a handicap parking space to be located there. So I think we could consider this complied with in that it was properly filed and it was reviewed to see if it could be done. What is the will of the committee?
Yes, I think that makes sense. If they said it can't be done, then I think we should do it, have it complied with. And then the councillor that filed it could look into perhaps other options for this resident, either at a different location or come up with something else that he would like to propose.
Right, and the word councillor is where, and I spoke with him today on this.
Okay.
And he-
All right. So I'll make that motion that it's been complied with.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So that's three zero that item 13 is complied with. How about if we go out of order and take up item nine?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Councillor Givner has joined us on the committee. Councillor Givner is here.
Oh, good.
Item nine, the Hoyoke zoning ordinances shall be amended to no longer allow daycare services in R1 or R2 district by right, but only by a city council special permit. We held a public hearing on this matter. The public hearing was closed on April 26th. On May 10th, a letter was written from the planning board that was received in the clerk's office on the 12th, written to me regarding the Hoyoke zoning ordinance text change, daycares by special permit in R1 and 2. I'll read it into the record. Dear Councillor Vakin, On May 10th, 2022, the planning board voted for a zero against the proposed zoning ordinance change to no longer allow daycare services in R1 or R2 district by right, but only by a city council special permit. We recommend to the ordinance committee and through them to the full city council that this change not be adopted. While creation of a special permit requirement appears to be permissible under state law, no compelling need for such a change was identified through research and public testimony. To the contrary, our joint public hearings with the ordinance committee add- oh, but they're referencing the dates, which was closed on the 26th. And our deliberations identified many ways in which such a change would be detrimental for the city and its residents and businesses. Home-based daycares such as they are are permissible in residential zones, are already highly regulated by the Massachusetts Department of Early Education and Care. Providers receive extensive training and their properties are subject to regular inspection. Whereas the city council requires special permits for other home-based businesses in residential districts, few if any other home occupations are regulated in the ways and to the extent that daycare is by EEC. Adding a special permit requirement for home daycare appears to create only redundancy and unnecessary burden for operations, operators of such services, given the high level of scrutiny they already receive. The few complaints that were aired about the presence of home-based daycare in residential neighborhoods involved issues that, while not immaterial to neighborhoods' quality of life, were either not properly subject to government regulation, toys and yards are already subject to policing regardless of the source, cars speeding or blocking the street at pickup or drop-off. Neighbors with complaints about such issues that cannot be resolved through those channels may file complaints against the daycare operator with the EEC. The addition of a special permit does not appear to add any benefit that is not already provided for through these channels. Particularly given the well-articulated need for daycare options in our community, we find no reason to add a special permit process which burdens providers without offering any benefits in the city and community, and recommend against approval of the proposed zoning change. If you have any question regarding this recommendation, please feel to contact me, signed by John Kelly, Chair of the Planning Board. I think everybody has received a copy of this as well prior to the meeting tonight. I think most of us were present at the hearings.
No.
Councillor Jourdain?
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, you can make a motion and then we can have any discussion once the motion's before us.
Right, we had an opportunity to review it. It's kind of interesting, the whole thing of it, just it's good for us to know what the rules are. And so councillor Bartley raises, with the help of the Law Department, to let us know what our authority was, and it appears to be more permissible and expansive than we previously had thought. Having said that, I concur with the planning board. We did the research and it appears to be heavily regulated. Of course, left unsaid here is the fact that we should take note that this is for people that actually follow the law, right? That people that actually go and get a license, they're regulated. We're going to have to be mindful in the future of those that aren't following the process, that all of the very, very professional, you know, very organized, incredible people that are doing this line of work, and obviously have been doing it for a long, long time, will have to think about if there is problems related to people that are doing this unlawfully, there still seems to be a remedy for them, right? We can have an avenue to have those type of individuals reported, or their neighbors could report people that are operating that are not licensed. One of the things that we also learned during this process is that all of the licensed people, their names and addresses are all listed online on the website. So you can check to see who's legit and who's not. For those that are legitimate and are properly licensed, you have a course of action and a remedy. You can go and see the appropriate state authority. For those that are not and are doing something inappropriate, you can report it to that state authority. So there are remedies that really don't need the city council to be involved in at this point. So therefore, in light of that, in light of basically our findings are the same as the planning board, and we listened to those that were involved, it seems that this is covered at this point. There are solutions for those rare cases where there are people that are a problem. So having said all of that, I think we have a good cause to defeat this. And I'll make a motion that it be denied. And that the ordinance, that we studied it, and that it be defeated.
I'll second that motion.
Under discussion, does anybody wish to add anything? I would just like to add, and okay, that I think we did gain a lot of information that we previously, at least I previously, did not know. And so I think that was very helpful to me as a councillor and the public in general. And so I think if anything, it boosted the confidence in the home daycares that are recognized and licensed by the state. So I think that's a good thing. And if we have created communication paths for others where there are concerns, that's also a good thing. But I also agree that, if anything, we heard we have fewer daycares now than we had in the past. So it doesn't seem that we have an overabundance or that we have a long list of complaints. So I find myself agreeing with that motion. Councillor Givner, and then I'll recognize councillor Maldonado Velez.
Probably for many of the same reasons already mentioned. I would also like to deny this. And I think it would be important, just like we've been talking about having like a more accessible, you know, hotline or phone number to report health violation, you know, health department violations regarding the marijuana ordinances. Or I noticed recently, like, there's a lot of different links on our city website to report things. This would be the kind of thing that if there are citizens who are concerned about an illegal daycare, that there should probably be a phone number they can call that would address this. So perhaps the EEC reporting phone numbers should be listed a little more easily for people to find, since people would likely think they're reporting a legit daycare. And that way it could come out whether or not it is legit, and it would support those who have a legitimate service and not necessarily- it wouldn't create any more loopholes for the people who are doing things right, but it would allow people to report things they think are not okay to the EEC. And then through that, it might come out that that's not a legal service, in which case it probably should, you know, or definitely should be shut down, so.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Maldonado Velez?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Madam Chair. I first say that I'm in favor of councillor Jourdain's motion in denying this. And then I also want to thank everyone that came out to speak at our last, on the public hearing around this issue, and all the daycare providers chiming in to talk about the process and everything. I'm in agreeance with everything y'all are saying. I just want to add on, you know, as far as like reporting home daycare and stuff, you know, it's no secret that right now, providing daycare services is very, very expensive. I am not a parent, and I can only imagine having to budget $200 a week for childcare on top of everything else. So, you know, there may be a reason why some daycares may not be licensed. And in speaking with EEC, the Regional Director, Aaron Craft, your responses, you know, yes, report them, and not necessarily to report them, to shut them down, but to instead, you know, have the EEC reach out to these individuals that are providing these services, quote unquote, under the table, so that they can be licensed, so that we can make sure that, you know, they are being provided the resources that they need. And, you know, sometimes these may be older members in the community that, you know, are retired members taking care of kids, and there's, there should be opportunities for them to also get paid to provide daycare services. So I just want to respond with, like, if there are illegal daycares that people are aware of, report them and not to necessarily, again, shut them down, but to get the EEC to work with them to make sure that they're being licensed, that, you know, we're being safe. Because all the daycare providers that I've spoken with, there's wait lists. Someone had wait lists of like up to 10 kids. So it's definitely a need that we need in our city, so that's all, thank you.
Good points, thank you. So we have the motion before us that's been seconded to deny the change at this time. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion carries four to zero. I see our planning board has joined us. Welcome. We have the easel there for the first presentation, so the Zoom can see it. I have language, yes. It's in the packet, I believe, I think. Yep, you can take a whole packet. Mm-hmm, no problem. Okay, so I believe everybody from the planning board is with us now, either here or on Zoom?
Correct.
Yes?
Should be, they've called in. They're here.
Okay.
Yep, they're here.
Okay. Then what I would like to do is entertain a motion to take up item one and open the public hearing, which will be held jointly with the planning board.
Motion to take up item one and open the joint hearing with the planning board?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we'll just wait for planning board, they'll open theirs, and then you'll be on.
Entertain a motion, open a public hearing with the planning board to take up a zone change from BH to BC, 18 Cabot Street, Capri Pizza. Gennaro Santinello is the applicant.
Okay.
Second on the motion?
Second.
Would you call the roll, please, Shannon?
Thought moves Anna?
Yes, ma'am.
Fernander?
Yes, please.
Kate?
Yes.
Emmy?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
And for ordinance, our public hearing is a zone change application from BH to BC for Gennaro Santinello at 18 Cabot Street to make the pre-existing non-conforming structure under BH zone a conforming structure under BC zone. So we're now properly open, and if the applicant would like to come to the, or come in and do the presentation, and you can take your board and show it to, you can move it around the room too, to show folks that. It's a little awkward trying to cover all the bases with Zoom. Welcome.
Thank you, Councillors, more members, thank you for having us. My name is Luca Minio, I am representing Lucia Realty LLC, the property owners of 18 Cabot Street.
Oh, can we get- We cannot hear him, he needs to use the microphone.
Oh. You'll have to, I think, for it to carry over the mic.
Can you hear me now? Is that too loud? Again, so my name is Luca Minio, I am representing Lucia Realty LLC, the property owners of 18 Cabot Street, the home of Capri Pizza. And before I get into the presentation, I just want to give just a quick overview as to how we came to where we are today. So over the last couple of years, Capri has always envisioned transforming their parcel again, totally redoing it. They have since acquired a budding parcel, which was kind of an automotive repair facility that was kind of into repair, and have cleaned that all up, and have since consolidated this budding parcel with their pre-existing parcel.
So it's one lot?
Yeah, one big lot now at the corner of South Summer and Cabot Street. So they're, at this point, once they have the lot acquired and consolidated, they're starting to do their architectural drawings. And they're putting together some nice plans, some preliminary site layout plans. And that's at this point, they know that they have a problem. And the problem is that, at some point in time, the zone for their existing parcel had changed, and it changed to Business Highway. And the problem is that the front yard setback for a structure in Business Highway is 25 feet. And they are right up against the right-of-way line, which makes their structure a grandfathered, pre-existing, non-conforming structure. So as it sits, it's fine, but if they want to do any alterations, additions, you know, they have an issue getting permits. So I started our conversation first with Jeff Burkett. And Jeff had first indicated that you might need to go to city council for a special permit. And then he came back to me and he said, "That's not the case, you have two options." The first option would be for the property owner to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance. And there's two reasons why this doesn't work well for the property owners. The first reason is that they really don't fall under the criteria for a variance. So when they look at, you know, things that would be considered for a variance, it's shapes, soils, and topography. So for an example, say if you have like wetlands on your site, and only by moving the structure into the very, you know, into that setback would allow you to have a building, that would be something considered? So that, we don't fall within any of those categories for a setback variance. And the second reason is that if the property owners ever decided that they wanted to make an additional change, they would have to go back to the ZBA again and get another variance for whatever addition that they wanted. So which leads to why we're here, it's our second option. It's the option of changing from the zone Business Highway BH to Business C. That would make the structure conforming, because there's no front yard setback. And the property owners do know that they are reducing some of the allowed uses that would be allowed on their parcel, because Business C is more restrictive than Business H. Like, they couldn't put a gas station there, there's, I think, maybe eight or nine things that they couldn't do. They're aware of that, they don't plan on changing. This restaurant is, has been here for 60 years, correct me if I'm wrong. And they're going to be around for a lot longer. And they're prepared to make a tremendous investment into that little corner of the city. And I'd like to just jump into the presentation now.
Sure. Planning members, do you want to, would it be better for you if you could be over on the other side?
So this is kind of what they've put together. This is kind of what they put together before they, we kind of put the brakes on things, because we don't want to get so far into design without having the zone change set in place and maybe expending, you know, resources that they might not have to, you know, things don't go the way that we hope that they do. So here we are, 18 Cabot Street, as you can see, we are in Business H, and you have some downtown residential that is surrounding it. And the purple right here is the Business Highway, which we're caught into. And then this is what they are planning on doing.
So can we go back to that just for a second?
Yeah, sure.
And I'm just, this is sort of an interesting, different kind of zone change.
Yep.
But I'm just wondering if, is there any other BC near you?
So there is not, and-
But you're going for a lesser use.
Right, so I know that obviously-
But I was just curious.
Yeah, spot zonings are something that's frowned upon, but it's normally when you're going the opposite direction.
The other way, right.
And we had a lot of, I had a pretty lengthy conversations with Jeff Burkett, the Assistant Director of Planning, who's indicated there's actually quite a bit of properties that actually fall in the same situation as us. There's a supermarket right across the street that is on Business Highway, but their structure is pre-existing, non-conforming. So at first he was saying, "Hey, listen, let's try to get all the property owners together so we can make this change altogether."
Yeah.
But the problem is that it takes, well, it takes a lot of time. It takes a ton of time and a ton of coordination to do this, you know? And there's processes and time and money that goes into it all. So we just said, you know, we would like to just proceed kind of on our own, maybe being the first one to kind of open up the idea.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So this is what they have proposed. So, I mean, I'm just going to use my finger here. So there's a dash line here and a dash line here. Those are showing, this is the existing structure. So the small additions they're making are right here and right here. If I ran my hand across this, this is the pre-existing parcel that the restaurant was situated on. It's the restaurant, and they have a small parking area over here. The parcel that they acquired was, it's a gravel lot. This is a garage that's going to remain. It's all gravel now, but it is all going to become impervious. I've already been in discussions with the city engineer. We're going to have to go before the Hoyoke Stormwater Authority at some point, assuming that the zone change is passed. But we have proposals from a couple of local engineering firms solidified, so we're ready to go to start the engineering design. And the biggest thing for that, that they're going to be looking for is stormwater onsite. How are we going to mitigate? Because right now, this area right here can, it actually can, you know, the ground takes in that water, and now it's not going to, so we have to mitigate that onsite. So that's when, I think it's Robert, I'm not sure, I know he's-
Bob Parent?
Bob Parent, yes, so that's when he gets involved, but that's a little later down the road. So we, they're actually putting a patio in here, and all-new parking, it's going to get all new striping. There's going to be decorative black fence that they're going to put in around the property limits. The actual front entrance is somewhere right here right now. It's going to be moved right here, it's going to be more of your takeout entrance. And the main restaurant entrance is going to be right here. You got a bar in the middle, and then you have seating on both sides. And they have, they're going to have a divider here, just in case they have, you know, parties and they want to close down maybe half the dining hall. And this right here is all your kitchen, and this is your takeout area, and this is where they're checking people out.
And I want to thank you for this detailed presentation.
Sure.
But I do want to share with you, and for any of the public that may be watching, that we have really no role-
No, no, I know, I just-
-in this part.
Oh, for sure.
We're really only going to be looking at the zoning aspect, and then whatever uses are within that would be allowable. But we, but it is, but it is nice to hear the project.
And I won't take up any, on that, no, I won't take up-
I'm not trying to rush you, but I just wanted to clarify that.
No, I totally understand that you're specifically looking at zoning itself and that only. And I just want to show you what the outside is going to look like when it's done. And then I'll open the floor to any questions that you guys may have. So that's pretty much the sum of it, why we are here before you with the request to go from BH to BC. In order to make any changes to the building, we need to have a conforming structure, and this is the best path for us to do that.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Would you like me to look for hands to let you know, or can you see okay? You can't really see, right? I'm not seeing any at this moment.
I like-
Well, I guess you've been very thorough. I'm not seeing any questions at all from planning.
I hear. It seems like a very-
Oh, I'm sorry, Tony.
So I'm glad, I think, you guys want a more like dining place and patio. I think it's good for the downtown area, we need it. And I think I'm happy seeing that plan, looks good, you know, thank you.
I just want to also kind of compliment you the fact that it seemed you're going to do an awful lot to really improve, improve that whole, that whole area, make it look much more attractive with, not just the expansion with the plantings, a lot, et cetera. So I really, I really congratulate you on that, and I hope you have 60 more years. I won't be eating there 60 years from now, but believe me, I wish you the very best.
Councillor McGivern?
I know we usually reserve comment until the public hearing is closed and for discussion, but I'd just like to echo the thoughts of the planning board that, you know, this business is well-established in Hoyoke. When you're looking to go from Business Highway to Business Central, to me, it's a no-brainer, because you're going to a zone that's less restrictive and causes less problems. And one of our biggest problems throughout the city is Business Highway, where we don't need it. And this complements what the owners of Capri have been doing for so many years. It's, you know, we can't compare pizza products to other pizza places, but we know the popularity of Capri has always been there. And that small pizza will still be served, right? Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other questions. And as I noted, this is a little bit unique, but in a positive way, as has been mentioned by others. So councillor Givern?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just surprised, I didn't realize that to go from BH, that included in BH was the restriction on the structure. So I was actually surprised to find that, and I think that's a really interesting reason. I mean, it's a, it's a good reason to change the zoning, obviously, but I always thought that BH was kind of allowed you kind of to do anything you possibly could dream of with your space, so.
As long as you're 25 feet back, then you can do whatever you want.
I definitely support this, and- I definitely support this and have obviously eaten some pizza from Capri. But yeah, that's very exciting.
And we're in a public hearing and so I just want to be sure if there's anybody on the Zoom. I don't see anybody in chambers that wants to speak in favor or in opposition to this zone change, if they could let themselves be known. Not seeing any, not hearing any. I don't think there are any. So but the opportunity has been put forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to?
Entertain motion to close the public hearing of the planning board?
Sumo.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Sharon, recall the roll, please.
Rosanna.
Yes, ma'am.
Gerninger.
Yes.
Kate. Did I lose Kate? Mimi?
Yes.
And John Kelly.
Yes.
Okay. My name is. So on our end, if committee is ready, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. I'm going to go with a five zero. Counselors Jordan, Counselor Maldonado, Velez, I'm taking as yes.
Yes.
Okay. And so as this process works, we will now be awaiting the recommendation from the planning board, which we'll take up at a future meeting in committee to make a recommendation to the city council. Okay? All right. So I'd like to entertain a motion to take up item two and open the public hearing.
Motion to take up item two and open that public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So this public hearing is a joint hearing with the planning board for a zone change application from R two to BL for Betli LLC care of Edison Yi at Zero Pleasant Street to create continuity from the abutting parcel to the south to allow for future development. So our hearing is open.
Entertain motion to open the public hearing of the Hoyoke Planning Board to take up a zone change request from R two to BL, Zero Pleasant Street, Betli LLC, Edison Lee is the applicant.
Sumo.
Second motion?
Second.
Call the roll, please, Sharon.
Rosanna.
Yes, ma'am.
Gerninger.
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Not sure who's in the room there, but I do happen to see that the applicant is an attendee at the moment. Or.
So whoever is here representing this group, you have the floor and you can go over your application with us?
Good afternoon or good evening at this point in time. My name is Alexandra Chiketti. I am from Arlovex Associates here tonight, representing on behalf of Betli LLC under the care of Mr. Edison Yi. At this point in time, I'd like to share my screen if I have the permission.
Sure.
It looks like the host has disabled the screen sharing.
You should be off.
You should be good.
And that when I have the screen shared, if somebody can just let me know that they're able to see it, that would be great.
Yes.
Okay. So this is our plan here that we've submitted with our zone change. It's for the property located at Zero Pleasant Street, which you'll see right here. The applicant is respectfully requesting that the planning board recommend to the city council to approve the proposed zone change from the current zoning district as two family residence to be changed to limited business. The subject property is located at the intersection of Pleasant Street and Hampden Street. The said property is located at Zero Pleasant Street, which currently consists of a paved parking lot northerly adjacent to eight twenty-five Hampden Street, which you'll see here in green, which is also now currently zoned limited business. We are solely seeking to change the current zone located at Zero Pleasant Street from two family residence to the abutting zoning district of limited business. The purpose of this zone change is to create one contiguous zoning district for the petition parcel located at Zero Pleasant Street. And the proposed zone change will extend the limited business district to create a zoning continuity on both parcels to allow for the proposed reuse. At this point in time, I would like to take on any questions from the board or any members here tonight.
I have a question.
Really, this really is a is really much maybe just a thought more than a question, but did you ever think of maybe at some point merges merges into one parcel?
At this point, we are not sure if we're going to be doing that quite yet. I think the first step in the multi-step process is to get the zone change and then we're going to be going through planning board on the future development on the properties. I'd assume that I know Mr. Edison Yi and Mr. Nick Yi are here in attendance tonight, that they may have some of some opportunity to present an answer to that question.
Sure.
Do you want to hear from them?
Yeah. And again, it's it's not it's not required. I just think at some point you you put together, it's called ANR, and these could become one parcel for one development and one, you know, one ownership and wouldn't be split up in the future. But again, just a comment. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Jordan?
Yes, Ms. Chiketti, I I want to make sure I'm understanding the request. Is it, this is the Old People's Bank property? And as I'm looking at my screen, it's this purple area that's the other portion of their parking lot. Is that what the request is?
Yes, it is. So you'll see that the portion in green is eight twenty-five Hampden Street and the portion that's hatched up here to the north is Zero Pleasant Street. The green is what is zoned limited business and the purple or pink, as you see, is two family residence.
Okay. What's the proposal to do with the property? Why is this needed?
Under section six of the Hoyoke zoning ordinance, specifically six point one point two for size and access, it states that such access drive shall not be located in the residence district if the drive provides access to uses other than permitted in the residence district. That being said, the Yi family has a local franchise, a restaurant franchise, that they are excited to bring the proposal into Hoyoke and that is what they're going to be proposing to do.
Okay. So a restaurant essentially?
Correct.
Okay. And just so I understand it, is it going to be with a different building and that footprint? Or is it going to be like a demolish and then have a different configuration and you sort of need all of that? Basically, the whole parcels, it's not going to remain a parking lot essentially? Is it going?
I'm sorry.
Is it going to be like the building is going to extend now, like a relocation of the building potentially?
Nope. So essentially, right now, the way that we are going to or going through the preliminary layout is we have the existing parking lot to remain as an existing parking lot with associated site improvements, of course. The building will not be demolished. It's proposed reuse. They'll be adding hopefully a patio on the on the parcel for eight twenty-five Hampden. So at this point, we do understand that we'll be coming back to the planning board to submit additional required applications for the proposed reuse.
Is the ATM going to remain down in the, what would be what the westerly corner?
Yep. So I believe if I'm correct, it stands right here and that ATM will remain as it's not necessarily an existing portion of eight twenty-five Hampden Street. I want to say that their property line is right here where the dashed line is. So they, the People's Bank right now is under the current ownership of these two parcels. And you'll see the property line to the back too as well.
I see. So People's Bank owns all three of these lots or it?
Correct.
And and your client is only going to purchase these two easterly ones? They're going to, People's is going to keep the westerly one where the ATM is?
Yep. So the northern parcel at Zero Pleasant Street and the southern parcel at eight twenty-five Hampden Street will be purchased by the Yi family and these, this parcel right here, you'll see the land NF of People's Bank that will remain as is.
Is it projected that there'll be a drive-through needed for the new restaurant or no?
That was a piece of discussion that we've had and since since we've gotten further into the planning procedure, it's something that I don't think our applicant is any longer considering. So right now, we are not anticipating a drive-through.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
By the way, I actually, I apologize. I did just think of another question. Did you, in in doing your postings on this, did you receive any communications from any of the neighbors or any objections to your proposal to date that we should be aware of?
Our company has not at this point in time. If our clients have, we have not heard of any and they've been pretty up to date with us, as so as we have as well. So no, not that we are under the impression or understanding that we've received any, I guess, pushback on the proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Counselor Bacon. Hampden Street is is obviously a commercial district in this area for for two or three blocks, one maybe partially proceeding and then as we go forward. I'm just curious as to, and I welcome the developers to Hoyoke, it's about time. But I'm just curious as to why it's numbered Zero Pleasant Street? That doesn't fit with the with the properties themselves. Actually Googled Zero Pleasant Street. I got something way up on North Pleasant Street.
I apologize. I am unsure of the answer to that question. I don't know if that was directed towards me or anyone else. As of right now, we've been labeling it strictly the parcel ID so we don't confuse ourselves as well. We had a little bit of a difficulty locating the parcel type thing in Zero Pleasant Street as well, so we kind of have been going by the strict parcel ID, which you'll see is what we've labeled on the map for that reason.
Which I did know and I'm sure we're fine as far as the hearing goes and as far as the legalities go. And I think the the Commissioner Kelly, the chair of the the planning board, you know, certainly made a good point to where you might want to consider combining these properties if, you know, as the project goes forward. But but thank you and thank you for coming in for the proposal. It's not nice to drive by the Old People's Bank and see it vacant.
Just to be technically correct, I will read into the public hearing the parcel number, which is zero nine two dash zero zero dash one one two. Okay. We are in a public hearing. If there is anybody on Zoom by phone, I don't see anyone in the chambers that wishes to comment either in favor or in opposition to this zone change, please make yourself known.
Madam Chair, question?
Counselor Jordan?
Do we get the list of all the abutters that were notified so that we just make sure to cover ourselves that everybody that was supposed to be notified was that there was no issue with people perhaps not knowing what Zero Pleasant Street was?
So on the first application, I had a list. On this application, I also have copies of the mailing addresses in within the three hundred feet of butters.
Okay. And what what do we have a copy of the notice they received or?
Counselor, this is Jeffrey. I I can get you that easily.
Okay.
I'll make sure I circulate that to everybody.
Okay. I just don't see the exact posting. I'll do a quick look.
I mean, they're probably, if nobody came, there's probably no objection. The only thing I'm concerned about is if people are looking at a notice they're getting in the mail or however they're being notified and if it says Zero Pleasant versus the correct address, then have they really received correct notice? That's my, I'm just making sure we cover ourselves that way.
Oh, so you want to make sure they're aware it's the People's Bank building?
Right. Because they they're going based on the address. I mean, if somebody got a notice and looked into it, would they know this is what we're talking about tonight?
Right. Thank you. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just, in regards to this, I think if the neighbors were notified, great. I ha, I'm. It's a small neighborhood, so did I understand that they should have been notified within three hundred feet?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the notice.
Um, because I happen to know that the neighbor next door was not aware that that parking lot was not already business zone. So I would imagine that many people think it's already part of that bank plot, which is a little, I mean, I don't think it's bad to to change it, but I wonder how much traffic it'll bring with that house right next door to it, like sharing a property line. But at the same time, it was just mentioned that that would be like a patio. So I don't know. I just want to raise a little bit of the same concern that Counselor Jordan has with making sure that the neighbors actually know that there is a zone change request.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this at all?
Counselor Bacon, I do happen to have the public hearing notice, if that helps.
Oh, if you if you could read it into the record, that would be great.
For. The Ordinance Committee of the Hoyoke City Council and the Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing on Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty PM to hear a zone change application from R two to BL for Betli LLC care of Edison Yi at Zero Pleasant Street with the parcel ID zero nine two zero zero one one two to create continuity from the abutting parcel to the south to allow for future development, meaning will take place and so forth and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. So I think it's clear that it was legally represented properly, but it, there still could be a question. Did people know it was that building? I'm just picturing that area down there and everybody pretty much knows their neighborhood there. So I bet they, I bet, I'm I'm thinking at least.
There's, there's a few folks with their hands up on Zoom.
Okay. Linda? Okay. Hang on. I'm looking. Oh, Jeff Burkott would like to weigh in. Can we hear from him? Maybe he can clarify the technical matter.
So for what it's worth, that I don't know whoever called it zero, but there actually is no number with that. So it would only be identified with the parcel number. Buildings technically without building, parcels without buildings on them don't have addresses. Some, there's might be some carryovers if there was formerly a building there and let's just say that was Twelve Pleasant Street or or something. That number might still carry. But in this case here, there actually is no, there's no zero. It's nothing. It's no different than the church across the street. Just to its east, there's a parcel that's known as Hampden Street, parcel ninety-one sixty-three, but it doesn't have an address. So there really is not an address associated with this. It would only be identified as that parcel number. Not sure if that helps, but just for maybe clarification.
Thank you.
It does. But Madam Chair?
I just want to let you know one of your board members has her hand up. Kate. Counselor Jordan?
Well, how come we don't say it's the lot adjacent to? And then we give the correct address of the building it's adjacent to? It seemed like this could have been very clarified easily, right? Like, we we know the address for People's Bank building. It could have said the lot adjacent to whatever that is on Hampden Street. I mean, I'm just a, I just want to make sure people are getting good due process here that they know like Zero Pleasant Street. That and it isn't like it's a short little street. It's a huge street that goes real, you know, what's that, a mile long? It could be anywhere on the street. And and by reading that, you'd have no idea as to where that is on Pleasant Street that you're referring to. We can't expect anybody to know what the lot numbers are from a plot plan. So my question is, are people getting effective notice? So my question is, are people getting effective notice?
Whoever I can see clearly, whoever the planning board has a question, please go ahead.
Hi, sorry, my connection was unstable, I I do have a question. Um it um a number of people have have asked the question about combining the parcels and it seems to me that be that that would be very useful. Um there's a lot of logic to having this um join in with the other parcel as a BL parcel, but I um would rather see BL zone continue to be facing towards Hampden Street rather than to the street. So I I would really like to see those parcels um combined and I wonder if the applicant is amenable to um the approval, if we decided to approve it being conditioned on um an A and R um combining of those two parcels into one.
Um I know Mr. Edison Yi is in this meeting right now, so if that's something that we can bring him up to make a statement about recommending the A and R and making sure that that's something that he can amend to, um so that way we can get that into the approval or the conditions. Um I'm not sure on how you're able.
Just to clarify that, I'm I'm asking that, I'm not sure that that would be the vote of the board, but it is certainly something that um is of interest to me in terms of my vote.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would I think I would only say that this is something I think they're aiming to probably considering, but the question before us right now just deals with the zone change. So I'd be very cautious about putting other those conditions around it. I think it's just probably going to happen naturally once they come back with a proposal for development.
Counsel Givern?
This is Edison uh on the panel here and just to give a little insight, we uh we would definitely consider um joining the two parcels at a juncture when it's appropriate to do so. And um but we would need to probably discuss that further, just to make sure that it's the proper uh decision.
Okay, Counsel Givern?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um my only concern is that that property abuts uh houses. I see that it that it does um on the left of the screen as well, but I'm speaking specifically to Pleasant Street. Um and I mean, no one is present for a public hearing to defend themselves, which is kind of on them, I guess, but um I don't know if uh those requesting this realize that Ward four is, I'm the counselor for Ward four, and so I just think about, I know there's a couple requests right now for zoning changes in Ward four. Generally, I'm all for it, but I do wonder about things that abut um residential property. So that that parking lot abuts a residential property and I'm not against it, I just I just really wish someone would chime in and I did get um a a a couple texts and emails just now saying that people didn't realize that zero was the parking lot. So as um Counselordordane was mentioning that he was wondering if people realized that was clear, a couple people were saying, actually, we had no idea that the parking lot was zero because there's no way to know what zero is and they hadn't checked on into the actual lot number, so.
They can speak now in the public hearing if they wish, they can come in by phone or on the Zoom if they have questions or they would like to speak.
I've encouraged them, they're working and otherwise engaged, but I was just like, do you know this is happening like across the street from your house or next door? And they did mention that they did get the public hearing notice, but they weren't sure what what zero Pleasant Street was specifically, so.
Okay. Tony?
Uh just a question, if, I'm just saying it, you know, just my clarification, if the zone changing does not happen, it does stop you opening a restaurant because that lot is just a parking lot, the way the bank was using it as just a parking lot? So I think you have enough enough uh space, because I looked that property, uh even you want to put the patio uh to open a restaurant. Uh it's still, you really needed zone change just for the parking? Or is there any other suggestion you guys have?
If I may, um make one statement regarding the last two statements that have been made. Um as somebody had stated, this is an existing parking lot that that's been used for um very, very many years. And uh that being said, at the point during the site development and when we've been coming back before the planning board and we're reviewing all of the proposals, uh traffic will be reviewed, screening opportunities will be discussed, um and things like that and so forth. And then the second statement in regards to the parking, it would create a dramatic disturbance on the proposal. That being said, we've reviewed the parking and we are going to have to be requesting for a special permit and a parking reduction. The existing building itself calls for, I believe, I believe, don't mark my words on the exact number, but it's in somewhere in the fifty spots for the existing restaurant as it's one space for for every forty square feet of floor area. Um that being said, that parking lot does not fit fifty spots. Um so right now, with our preliminary, we're looking at about sixteen spots with the existing parking spot or parking being used. So it would dramatically create a disturbance on the proposal and the future reuse of this property and the existing building itself.
So can I just clarify, it sounds to me like you are not intending to change the use of that lot?
Um are you stating to the fact that we are going to be proposing a restaurant or just itself unlimited business?
That you, it sounds like you're saying that you need the lot because you need the parking and it's been a parking lot?
Correct, that is going to be an existing parking lot reused as a parking lot.
So that use would be the same that people were accustomed to in the past?
Correct.
Okay, and so this is just a question from me to the Ward five, four counselor. Um do you feel that you could touch base with the people that are within the three hundred feet to assure yourself that they're adequately informed?
Yeah, I mean.
It's not, three hundred feet isn't really that much.
No, but it would be the immediate um neighbors and um, I mean, I think if it's being used the way it's already used, I think it's fine, the, I was just looking through our um our zoning to see if that would allow it to at some point be used as like a gas station, for example. That's something we're, you know, people don't want.
Right.
The kind of, I mean, a restaurant has constant business, but it's different, people come and they stay. You know, it closes at a certain time, it adds, I think it adds to a neighborhood, so.
Right, and maybe somebody on planning could correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe a gas station's allowed in BL.
I don't think so.
I don't believe so. I could stand corrected.
Last question would be for Jeff.
I do happen to have the use chart comparison, but I can't share my screen right now because Alexander is.
Okay.
I can stop sharing, if you'd like to share that.
Car wash.
It did have it pulled up, but it looks like it reset on my web browser.
Jeffrey, you'll just have to give me permission?
Commercial uses.
Sure, one second.
Yep.
It can't be an animal clinic. Although that I think that would be kind of okay.
I'm set.
Yep.
It can be a vet, but it can't be a clinic.
So car wash, so this is the R two, this is currently, this is the BL. And car wash.
No automotive uses would be allowed in a BL.
No, no automotive, okay, great, thank you very much.
And.
Okay.
I think the other thing, I I'd rather see something comes up in their building, a restaurant. Uh I if if I remember, I think Mrs. Lee on a Johnny's in South Hurley. So if it's coming nice restaurant and to the neighborhood, uh nice dining, uh I'm I'm happy for that.
Yeah, yeah, Counselordordane?
Yeah, um I just want to make sure I understand from Ms. Chiketti, you're saying that if we approve this, you have sixteen parking spaces for the restaurant?
We're saying that we're still going through the preliminary proposal and planning stages and that the parking is going to be um much less than is required and will be submitting further applications through the planning board to gain that approval on the parking reduction, yes. We'll need a parking reduction, I guess, is my final statement.
But you're saying approximately sixteen spaces is what's.
I don't want to make that statement, um I guess, clear and concise without knowing. I'm not the engineer on the project, um I am solely the permitting project manager for Arlevak Associates, so that's something that I need to review with our engineer.
It should be noted that Peoples, because they had a parking problem, built the parking lot next door. That's the whole reason they put that parking lot in there. And this is for a bank where people are just coming and going quickly, in and out, not having a situation where you're staying for an hour or two. That seems to be like, how is sixteen spaces going to work for a restaurant there? I I mean, I really like the idea of having the restaurant and it seems like that would be really cool. But on the other hand, by Peoples retaining the other parking lot to house their ATM, they took away, and I mean, I would see Saturdays with the with just banking and it was loaded. And and that's why, again, they didn't always have that parking lot and they put it in. Now, you're not getting the benefit of that parking lot and to think there would be a restaurant there with only sixteen spaces, that seems really tight. Um if if that's in fact what it shakes out to be for spaces, but uh anyways, I'm interested to to learn more about that, but I I am going to come back to the defective notice. Um I'm concerned, Madam Chair, that people did not get effective notice for this. Um I mean, I happen to know uh one of the people next door, so I'm gonna see if they understood this, but when people say, yeah, I got a notice, but I didn't know what it meant, that's defective notice, right? I mean, come on. Um I want to make sure no one's going to say that we didn't give them their due process and a notice that goes out that says zero Pleasant Street when we should have said it's zero Pleasant Street attached to, you know, the other, like a real address, so like if somebody wanted to go over and take a look. And I would have let it slide if it was like a street with, you know, five houses on it and it's obvious what it was. But this is a really long street, this could have been anything on that street. I I don't see how people have been given their due process here, so um it's not okay. I object and um I I think we need to get that fixed and renotice this public hearing, in my opinion.
Okay, then, well, we have that that opinion before us as to notice. Um you've had feedback from two of the people that.
I I would also, I hate to drag on, sorry.
Uh sorry, I just, is legal on this call if if this is a legal question, because I would argue that, you know.
Counselor Givern has the floor right now?
Okay, sounds good, I found my hand up for a minute.
I'll recognize you.
Um thank you, Madam Chair, sorry, Tessa, I think that's valid and um we'll get back to that immediately. I do think if it's not a legal issue, it might make sense to knock on some doors. I have to do some due diligence myself because I don't think I got a public notice about it and it's in my ward, so I wonder about those kind of things as well.
So it would be a Butters within three hundred feet of the property that would have gotten the notice and we do in our packet have the list.
Okay, thank you.
Um Counsel Murphy Ramboletti?
Yep, uh just wondering if we can possibly hear from legal on this issue?
So we're in a public hearing, I see Attorney Bissonette online. Attorney Bissonette, is this something that you could weigh in on now or is it something that you'd need to get back to us on?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
If the uh if the question is whether or not notice is adequate because of the lack of a number, uh appropriate number on the Pleasant Street address, the notice would be sufficient. Um and Land Court uh time and again has upheld that as a minor variation, particularly in this case where um the city's designation by lot number um is actually more accurate as a descriptive uh for this particular situation. Um I don't know if the applicant has uh done the title research on this, however, to determine whether or not there was any residential use of this property or whether perhaps it's a pre-existing uh lot. As both counselors have noted, there are several residences within that football field of three hundred feet. Uh so it's very likely that this was a residential property. At one point in time, it was so designated when the zoning act came into came into effect. So I believe the notice is adequate. However, that's a determination that may be made either by the planning board or the Counsel Ordinance Committee to renotice a hearing um by adjournment to a date certain and renoting the uh the participants uh within that football field. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, um I would note that the current zoning is residential, it's R two and they're seeking to change it to BL. So uh we have a legal opinion that the notice is legal and so um just speaking for myself, I would defer to the Ward counselor as closest to the ward and being if you are comfortable verifying with the Butters that they were noticed so that they would have further opportunity to object and we could accomplish that by keeping our hearing open, regardless of what the planning board may choose to do relative to taking in more information. But this committee can keep the hearing open to be sure that you're able to get feedback from all the people that were noticed here, to the extent that, you know, you would want to validate it. I mean, that's just one idea, that's all.
Madam Chair?
Counsel McGivern?
I just want to make sure that I'm following along, right? So uh we want to um wait or probably keep the meeting open um to make sure that residents got verif- uh good enough notification.
So we've had a concern raised by a member of a committee that was the notice adequate. Our city attorney has assured us that the notice was adequate, but the Ward counselor has indicated that people had some confusion about to which actual spot it meant.
Okay.
Because of the way that it was put forth, because it's technical.
Hmm.
And so my question was, if we keep the hearing open, it allows the public to weigh in further on the matter? And I was just checking with the Ward counselor to see if she felt that would be adequate to follow up with any, because we have everybody that got noticed between now and if we continue it, if she felt that that would be satisfactory to make sure the people understood.
If that's something that you want to do, then I'll 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 go with whatever you want to do.
I'm, I have mixed feelings about it because on the one hand, if if a notice was sent out and with a parcel number and legal has confirmed that it's adequate, I hate to hold up a process, but on the other hand, like, I don't know, maybe I feel like three hundred feet isn't enough, that's not even a whole block, like they're.
Right, but that's, that's just a rule, that's just a rule we're living under. I mean, that could be subject to change, but not now.
Yeah, not now.
That's not even like the whole, the all the four blocks that that business would be really affecting, so. Um I'm feel, I have mixed feelings about this because I'm generally pretty black and white, so if you got a notice and you just didn't read it or just didn't pay attention, that's one side. Um but if the notice wasn't very clear, I'm not sure I didn't receive it and hearing it, the plot numbers on it, so I feel like if you look up a plot number, you can find it, um so.
It's true.
Yeah.
So so I guess I'm bringing it up because generally I'd be inclined. So I guess I'm bringing it up, because generally I'd be inclined to still vote for it, because, you know, like, the parking lot has been a parking lot.
And it'll still be a parking lot.
Right, and it's still gonna be a parking lot.
And I think a lot of the neighbors didn't realize that it was...
I didn't even know that it was split like that, you know what I'm saying? And now that I notice it, it's like, okay, maybe we should fix it, right? It makes sense to fix it. But at the end of the day, I would rather defer to you as the Ward Four Counselor if you decide to want to do the processes. You know what I mean? It is what it is.
So, oh, yes, we have a trifecta. Okay, so how about if we go to Jeff Burkott, since he's been very involved with this? Jeff?
I'm not really sure if there's much value add to this, but just have it be known that, again, we do recognize, as per Attorney Bissonnet, we do recognize parcel numbers significantly as the main means of identifying parcels in the city. But also for a future zone change, which will be on the southeast corner, that if there's a problem with this, there'll be a problem with that, because again, parcel number ninety-one sixty-three in a future zone change would've come back as, well, perhaps zero or no number. So we just may need to look at that other public hearing notice to address that as well, because this will be precedent-setting for that. Just kind of adding to that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Maldonado Velez? You're muted.
Thank you, Counsel. I'm off. Thank you, Counsel Bacon. Sorry. Sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to chime in real quick. I think, maybe in the minority here, but I think renotifying the residents with, like, more actual direct information, I'm in favor of that. I mean, not to close our public hearing or anything, we can keep it open until the next month or so, but I remember when I was getting this, when I was going over, and I put it's Zero Pleasant Street. My Counsel McGivern said it's somewhere completely else. We can't expect residents to use a parcel ID number. I think some always even before getting the console, couldn't even know how to use a parcel ID number on MapGO, so we can't expect that of the residents. So I'm wondering, we can, I'm in favor of this change, but I do believe that the residents need to be notified properly, even at least this back, just to make sure we, you know, get that out of the way. But that's all I wanted to say, but also, you know, I live and work for it, and we have the Ward Four Counselor. I'll go with whatever Coco wants, Counsel Givner wants to do, but I don't think it's a bad idea to spend ten dollars to make sure that these residents are notified properly. And going forward, if, because Zero Pleasant Street, not even the address that's on MapGO is just Pleasant Street, like, there's no number attached to it. So I don't know how the zero got into the address in the first place. So I just want us, you know, going forward, making sure that we're putting maybe street intersections at parcels that don't have numbers. Yes, the abutting property with the Peoples Bank, but I mean, the street intersections would be very helpful, because street intersections, people tend to know. Because even addresses, people sometimes don't know. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Jeffrey, did you want to add some technical information for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on the notice real quick. So another detail in the notice that might be meaningful, I'm not sure. But I also do end the notices with an instruction that if somebody has a question about the notice they're receiving, I give my office phone number as well as my email address, so if there are any, if there's any confusion or question, they can reach out to me.
Did you get any calls on this particular notice from anybody?
I did not.
Okay, well, that's very helpful. Thank you. Counsel Jourdain?
Yes, so, again, a couple of points. I think Counsel Maldonado Velez supported what I was saying as well, and I think that's where Counsel Givner is. I think we can do this without too much delay. I like your approach. Madam Chair, if you're thinking about continuing it. I just, one, don't think it's Counselor Givern's job to go around leafleting houses, you know, with these notices, you know. They're the ones that want the zone change. I think they should spend the stamps to send out the notice of the next hearing. We can continue it. You know, we're taking in all this testimony here. We're gonna get all this information. This is extremely helpful. And if nobody comes at the next meeting, we chug it along, and that's all there is to it. It sounds like many people are supportive already, but I don't want to have ever a situation where, you know, we said, "Oh, just close the public hearing and let's move on", and then somebody said, you know, a month from now, "Well, that wasn't fair, or I didn't have an opportunity to be heard, because I didn't understand the notice." I mean, it's just not worth it. And number two is, we're supposed to make this as citizen-friendly of a process as it is. It's intimidating as it is, maybe not for the people on this phone, including myself, who does this all the time. But believe it or not, people actually get nervous to come down to these public hearings and say what is on their mind about things. So, but, you know, for us, it's all old hat. But for them to be expected to, "Oh, yeah, I'm gonna go on MapGO and look up blah, 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 blah", I mean, most people do not know how to do that. And the easy solution, at least there's one good takeaway from this meeting, is in the future, if we don't have an address, then we should say it's adjacent to the most nearest actual address, or it's across the street from X address. We should be clear with the citizens and try and make this as user-friendly as possible. So I think that's enough said on the notice, but I think in the future, we can do this a little bit better. I would ask that we spend the stamps and give these folks, you know, an opportunity to be heard. On the actual merits of it, while yes, it is true that it's going from parking lot to parking lot, it's a much different use of a parking lot. I'm actually intrigued by this whole thing about, if it is really gonna be that few number of spaces, our neighbors might say, "Well, it was a bank. People come in, come out. They had drive-through, and no one was actually sticking around." But if it's a restaurant, if there isn't sufficient parking, and now whomever, I guess, variance or Planning Board or somebody is gonna waive the right to have this parking, then are neighbors potentially gonna have questions to ask at our public hearing that, well, does this mean there's gonna be cars parked up and down Handen Street? That there's gonna be cars parked up and down Pleasant Street? Like, what happens with all these cars? I'm sure this restaurant is gonna be a great success. I know the Yee family is a tremendous family, and they've had amazing success with their restaurants. And I'm sure this will be, and I'm thrilled to have this coming here, so this is fantastic. On the other hand, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're accommodating whatever amount of parking is going to be here and needed. And maybe neighbors do have a question about that, that, you know, because this is a much different use, so... So anyways, that's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Okay, and I will note in this public hearing, as I did in the first public hearing, that the purpose that we're here for is to look at the zone change. We are not here to vet or to make any determinations about a specific project. But I do hear the concerns relative to the notice. Counsel McGivern? And you have a couple of your members, Mimi and the applicant.
Thank you, Chair Bacon. I hear the concerns, and I did get kind of raised it, because now knowing that there is no address, I guess I understand zero better. This, all zone changes are very difficult, difficult for us, difficult for the Planning Board, and difficult sometimes for any neighborhood to understand. The prior hearing tonight was very unusual, you know, going from a business highway. Usually we're hearing the opposite, where they want something that's much more loose, and concerns are raised. I understand the concerns here, and I'm sure there's a way to address them, but this is about use. It's about use. This is a property that has been used by Peoples Banks for decades as a commercial use. And we have a developer that's looking to do the necessary thing to continue the commercial use, a known developer that is going to keep the property up, maintain it correctly, do the proper mitigation to protect any residential properties that are nearby, and do the proper mitigation to, you know, to take advantage of a street that's got more traffic on it than any other street in the city itself. And it's not going to return to residential use. There is, in my humble opinion, that no one is going to invest the money into building a residential building on this property. When Peoples Bank came in to get the new drive-through after they closed the bank itself, we quickly granted that special permit to what is now that drive-through to the ATM, which used to be attached to the building, which is no longer attached. Not knowing exactly what type of business is gonna come onto this piece of property, it's limited by size. Site plan review, I believe, will kick in, but certainly other permitting processes will kick in. Parking will then become an issue. Drive-throughs could become an issue. All of those issues are not about use. The request here is reasonable from a developer to go to a business limited, which is a fairly conservative commercial type of property use and something that I think the neighborhood could live with. And I think, yes, we should continue to work with the neighborhood as far as what they would expect this property to be developed. And I think that can be done through with neighborhood meetings and done through with the developer, meeting with people, and talking about all the good things. I think sometimes, you know, when we certainly have our job to do, but the legal part of our job is the petitioner met what the law says. Certified mail was sent out to three hundred foot of butters. And to ask that to be done again, you know, I think is a bit too much. And I think we have to get through, what do we want the use of this property to be? And then get into, how does, what proposals come down the road? Get into what parking, and there are, it's not just the City Council that works on parking, you know, the Building Department, the Health Department, all, many other departments within the city, you know, will be weighing in, including, I'm guessing, and Jeff can correct me, that, you know, the possibility of a site plan review will also kick in. But I think we have to, right now, just determine what's the correct use for this property that's been used commercially for decades.
So in the queue, we have our applicant and we have Mimi Panich?
Yep. Mimi, why don't you go ahead first?
Thanks. Two points here. One is that the previous comments are absolutely right. The parking thing will come forth, Planning Board, during site plan review. As a matter of, no doubt, the applicant will want a special permit for reduction of mandatory parking. This will be public hearings. The Planning Board loves hearing from the public. We, I am very confident that we will invite everyone, we will listen to everyone. The neighborhood will, you know, whether or not this gets renoticed, the neighborhood will certainly have every opportunity to weigh in on questions of, is the parking adequate and how is it going to work? But the second thing is going back to the question of notice and whether it's effective or not. I think in all fairness to the applicant, the notice requirements, that three hundred feet and the certified mailing are what the state law sets forth, and they have complied with the state law. Now, I happen to agree with Counsel Jourdain and Counsel Givern. The requirements of state law do not necessarily mean that anyone actually had effective, useful notice of what was going on. And honestly, I would love to see some effort to correct that globally. This is not the only time it's happened. This is not the only situation where it comes up. And it is fairly usual over the years to have these arguments about, "Well, did the notice go out? Are we sure? Was, did everyone understand it?" And depending on the circumstances, people wind up on different sides of the discussion all the time. But, you know, I think this is an excellent opportunity to see what we could do to build on state law. You know, obviously, we can't preempt it. But if there are local requirements that can legally be added, I think it would be great, you know, for this process and for all of them to come. But right now, you know, the applicant complied with the law, and if we can do something less formal than renotice everybody with certified mail, you know, I think that would be a very appropriate thing. But I also am not comfortable, you know, just dumping extra costs on them when they did everything correctly according to the rules in place. And that was all.
Thank you. Alexandra Chichetti?
Yes, I would like to make a statement at this point in time as the applicant's representative that in the application packet, we do briefly discuss the Peoples Bank branch, and I know that itself is also public knowledge and public information that could be obtained with the town or the city of Holyoke. And that being said, although we understand the ineffective and effective pushback from both perspectives, it would also disrupt the advancement in the proposal on the project. And we are hoping that at the point when we get to Planning Board to review the additional applications, we have more public feedback, and that's at that point in time, we can touch base on that public feedback as well. So I guess at this point in time, we are solely hoping with meeting all the requirements, standards, rules, and regulations, and the law itself, that that is the main piece that's considered for this proposal on the zone change for Pleasant Street and the specific parcel ID.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I am very appreciative of the interest in the developer for this property. I find, listening to our legal and listening to planning, that as the applicant, you have met the legal burden of the notice. I also do hear the concern that there's some confusion, and I think that we can do informal outreach. We can keep our hearing open so that any public feedback can come to this committee as part of our public hearing for any confusion or lack of clarification. And I would note that there was an extra opportunity for people to call into the office if they had a question about the notice. And there is no question that people received the notice. So for me, that's how I'm looking at it. The Planning Board will do what they will do. But I would be interested in continuing the public hearing to give the opportunity, to give some time for the public to be able to weigh in now that we've had the public hearing. The Ward Counselor or any city counselor can advise the neighbors to go watch the tape and hear the whole presentation if they weren't able to avail themselves of it tonight. So that's my take on it, but I will go by the will of the committee. And so I would entertain a motion from a member of the committee, unless you want to defer to the Planning Board.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counsel Jourdain?
I think perhaps, I thought Planning Board Member Panich made a very thoughtful comment there, and in the spirit of that, I think perhaps the compromise may be that we continue it once we're done with whatever discussion here this evening. But we could ask our assistant to work with planning to make this a little bit more descriptive a notice, and then on our own nickel, we could at least send them first class. I don't think we need to do certified mail at that type of cost. And everybody that's on our list, the list that they had sent it to, we could send it out, you know, on our own nickel for the next continued date, whatever that happens to be, that we're gonna decide later. So, you know, I think that's worth, you know, fifty-five cents or whatever it is these days on the forever stamps. That will be my motion, once we're... But I don't want to chop off the discussion at this point and move, but, I mean, I want to finish whatever the merits of the discussion are for this evening, but once we feel comfortable that we're at the point of wrap-up, I'm suggesting we go that direction.
Thank you. Alexandra Chichetti?
I am just looking for one piece of clarification. That being said, I'm fairly new at this process, so I appreciate all of the information that's been provided. When you say "continue", do you mean until the next meeting is scheduled, as in could be a month from now? Or do you mean keep the hearing open until this meeting ends in hopes that anybody that is willing to join will join by the end of the meeting tonight?
that is willing to join will join by the end of the meeting tonight?
Okay, so here is how the process works. Once both bodies close their hearings is when a recommendation will be made to the city council. But before the ordinance committee makes a recommendation, we wait to receive a recommendation from the planning board. So each body can close at the same time or separately. So, as an example, the planning board could decide to close tonight or to continue their hearing if they feel they need more information. For the ordinance committee side, we've heard that people want to make sure the abutters are aware in a meaningful way. So, for us, the idea is that we would continue this hearing to a date certain, which could be as soon as June 8th.
Understood.
All right? And in that way, it was suggested that maybe our administrative assistant would send out another clarifying letter from the city, not putting it on you as the applicant, because we all agree that you have met your legal duty and we're, and at least, I'm not hearing any intention to try to hold up the process, just to be sure that the communication is clear.
Understood. Thank you.
So, I'm not seeing any other hands. I'm not looking, seeing anybody who wishes to be recognized, so I don't know if the planning board wants to entertain a motion, or I can go ahead and entertain the motion that we've kind of already heard.
Why don't you go ahead, Councilor, first of all?
Okay. So, Councilor Jordan, do you want to formally make your motion? Unless another member wishes to?
Yep. If, if everybody's ready to, to wrap up, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion to continue. Do, do we have the date?
June 8th, 6:30.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we continue the public hearing until June 8th at 6:30, and I would request that our administrative assistant work with planning to prepare a subsequent notice to give a more descript location for this and to resend it at city cost to the people on the list.
Regular mail.
That were noticed, that received, regular mail, that received the first notice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
So, that's confirmed.
Councilor Maldonado-Velez, are you here?
I said aye.
Okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. So, that's 4-0, that this hearing is continued until June 8th at 6:30. And with the request that Jeffrey send a regular mail clarifying notice to the listed abutters in the application. Thank you.
I swatso wish the planning board considering the public hearing. I'd like to make a motion if everybody's agreed to close the meeting for zone changing from R to, to be one on zero Pleasant Street. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second. I'll second that.
Okay. Would you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who seconded it.
We were fighting over it.
Yes. Everybody was seconding it.
Yeah.
Okay, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Berninger?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
And John Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just, you know, as a kind of footnote to this, I think that having closed it will save the applicant some time because we could go ahead and consider it and get you guys a recommendation so that you have it when the further testimony, if any, from the abutters comes in for you.
Yes, that would be great. We want to be business friendly and-
You're doing our best.
Citizen sensitive.
And citizen-friendly, which is also important.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to take up item three and open the public hearing.
Motion to take up item three and open a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. This public hearing was continued from February and March, that the health director, building commissioner, and any other relevant city official meet with the ordinance committee to discuss odor mitigation at marijuana entities in Holyoke for the purpose of, A, amending city ordinances and/or B, adding language to the list of conditions typically added to the marijuana special permit. So, under A, we have received feedback from our planning depart, I mean, from our Board of Health, some feedback from, oh, I'm sorry.
I appreciate moving the meeting along.
I know.
Give me 30 seconds more.
I'd like to entertain a, a motion to reopen the public hearing to consider zoned text change for odor mitigation at marijuana establishments and/or adding language typical, typical list of conditions. Second? Second motion?
Second.
Could you call the roll, Sharon?
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Berninger?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
John Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. I was thinking and hoping that Sean from our Board of Health would be here, but I don't see him on the Zoom.
He did get an invite, unfortunately, he did, does not appear to have arrived.
We really do, at least from my perspective, need his feedback because I see the Board of Health as the department that would be on point for these odor issues. So, at the risk of having June 8th be a very big meeting, we could either continue to the 8th. I mean, we've received a number of things into the public record already, but I think we really do need his feedback. So, we could continue to the 8th, or if it is the pleasure of the committee, we could continue to the 21st.
I believe you mean the 28th.
I'm sorry, Jeffrey?
I believe you mean the 28th.
Oh, okay, I, okay. Why do I have?
Yeah, the 21st is a full council meeting.
Okay. So, what is the pleasure of the committee?
I'm not hearing any comments, so I'll make a motion to extend the public hearing until June 28th at 6:30.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So, this public hearing is continued until June 28th at 6:30.
Entertain a motion to continue the public hearing, the planning board, to June 28th at 6:30 PM. Second motion?
Second.
Could you call the roll, Sharon?
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Berninger?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
John Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to take up item four.
Motion to take up item four?
And open the public hearing.
And open the public hearing, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, this is a public hearing filed by Councilors Bartley, Givner, Puelo, and Rivera, and ordered that the city council review and amend section 5.4 of the zoning ordinance to allow for accessory dwelling units in the DR zone, in addition to amending section two definitions and any other sections that may apply to allow this use in the DR zone. Accessory dwelling unit is a smaller independent residential dwelling unit located on the same lot as a standalone, for example, detached, single-family home.
Entertain a motion to open the public hearing, the planning board, to take up zoned text change for, to amend section 5 for multiple principal structures to allow accessory dwelling units, section two and definitions, irrelevant sections to allow the use in DR zones. Second motion?
Second.
Sharon, do you call the roll, please?
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Berninger?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
John Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, so I am not certain who the point person is on this, and so I'm very interested to learn about it because it is not an area that I'm familiar with, so. Madam Chair? Councilor Givner?
Well, I signed on to this because it is a, a couple cities are trying to do this, and it would allow for things that, in my mind, are like in-law apartments, but they would be for rental property use. So, it allows people to put something like an apartment above their garage and rent that out, or if they have like an in-law apartment, they'd be able to rent that out. And considering that we have a shortage of rental housing, it takes advantage of small spaces that people may have available to rent at lower costs than you might a full-size, you know, one-bedroom or two-bedroom, so we could be able to rent something at a lower cost and maybe, you know, for a single person, or, you know, a couple or a person with a pet or something like that. So, my reasons for, for supporting this are basically just for the simple fact that we are having a housing shortage, more and more properties are being bought up by corporations for rentals, and this is a way for those who own their property and perhaps have extra space that they might be able to legally turn into rental property to do that at a, a lower rate than for like a two- or three-bedroom apartment.
So, if you know, and not to put you on the spot, but if you know, are you aware of a couple of communities that we could maybe gain some language or references from on this?
It's my understanding that Northampton is doing this. I'm, I think East Hampton was looking into it. I am not sure about other neighboring communities here. I know it's very popular on, in some of the Cape communities because they have a lot of vacation properties.
Okay.
You know, so it's really common with people with places where they have maybe like a, a guest house or a pool house and turning it into a rental instead of, this would not be for Airbnb usage specifically. It would be specifically to rent long-term at a dis, or not at a discount, but it'd be long-term, smaller rental unit.
Right. Not as expensive as a house because it's small.
Because it's small.
Kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it sounds like we have homework to do.
We definitely have homework to do. It's pretty new to me as well.
Okay. All right. Well, that's a fair summary. I'm not seeing any hands.
We have Rosanna's hand up?
Go ahead, Rosanna. Then I'll go after her.
My question or thing is, I would like Jeff to kind of input on this because I, I see the need, but I feel like we need more clarification. So, Jeff, can you clarify?
So, just for, to give some clarification, so looking to a planning website, which is planning.org, it's kind of the overseer of planners throughout the country and, and say the world, okay? So, with that, and the definition of an accessory dwelling unit is a smaller independent residential unit located on the same lot as a standalone, i.e. a single-family home. So, basically, what this would allow for is a similar program that was, I think, back in the 80s and perhaps 90s where there were similar, where what would happen is you build the main unit, in this case, they were building two-family split duplexes, and that the owner would buy one, one of the units, and then assuming rent the second unit to help pay the mortgage for the first one. So, similarly, that's what this would afford, would be the ability to build a second unit only in the DR district because that's one of the areas that is, you know, downtown residential, increase the density is, you know, one of the goals. And so, it would allow for someone to build a smaller unit technically in their backyard that would allow them to gain the income off of that to then help pay their bills, so to speak. And that, you know, currently, we have section 5.4 of the zoning ordinance, 541, which says, except in the residential districts, more than one principal non-residential structure may be erected, but there's no opportunity for multiple residential units in, as a special permit say. So, with that, this would, you know, we, we, we looked at 54 and thought that a new section could be added, something to the effect of, you know, a, a subsection of 541, where it would say that the, you know, a second movable unit would be allowed on, under this special permit under 54, but it would, again, would be for residential units. And, you know, I know that there's a significant, there's, there's a lot about it, fury for it, and I believe even the government is, or the mass.gov is also promoting this type of use. I don't have those documents in front of me, but I know that the, the documents are rather substantial, or whatever that's worth. And we can certainly get, pull that together.
So, just to clarify, would it be then accurate to say, as an example, it could be an attached in-law apartment type of thing like what Councilor Givner was referring to? Because I know in the past-
It's a separate movable unit.
Okay. But it could be attached to the big unit?
No, I, I think the intent is a separate structure.
Oh.
Because the argument could be made that to add a, to add, to, add an attachment in a DR, you can already have a multi, you know, one multifamily residence on a property, this would be for an, another unit. See, when you have two, two-family, it takes on all different fire codes and all these additional things that a single unit wouldn't have. So, it affords you a more economical way to construct a second unit on your property for, you know, for that, the, the monetary benefit.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I, I kind of think of one, there was a time not too long ago, we're looking at tiny houses, and I don't know, that really didn't go much further than discussions, but this could be an opportunity to look at the tiny houses concept for some of these particular lots. And I'm sure we get to it, we'd certainly make sure we look at lot size and setbacks, et cetera, you know, when you do position of other, other properties. But certainly, I think it's got a lot of merit to, to look at, just we gotta, I think his counselor said we gotta look at a little more homework on this and, you know, give her information.
Madam Chair?
And to John's point, you know, with, with, with DR zoning, you know, you look at the whole block as far as setbacks and whatnot. So, in citing these, you know, I mean, again, tiny houses, you know, we never had a specific tiny house ordinance because we already allow them technically, as long as they meet building code, as long as they meet the codes, you can live in a phone booth if you want to, as long as it has, meets the sanitary codes and whatnot. So, and building code. So, but, you know, DR being such a flexible zone, you know, it would never be anything, hopefully not obnoxious, because you're already looking at the five parcels on the same side of the street on the same block to kind of mirror or the, the same setbacks and whatnot. So, it, it hopefully, or the intention is that it will, you know, that it would fit into neighborhood.
Okay. So, Councilor Givner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I just looked up real quick on the Massachusetts website, the mass.gov, and they talk a little bit more about accessory dwelling units, and they can be detached or attached. But the main, the main takeaway I get from that, from their website there is that you can't sell the unit separately. So, you know, it would be built on the owner's property, whether it's, you know, if you have it above your attached garage, it would, it could still count. If it's a in-law apartment that you rent separately that no longer gives access to your house, that would count. But most importantly, you cannot sell it separate from your home. So, you would not be able to turn your residential home, wherever you live, the single family, you wouldn't suddenly be able to turn it into a two-family residence. You wouldn't be able to change the zoning. So, you know, you could put a little, a tiny house in your yard, but you wouldn't be able to sell it with that piece of land to anyone.
Right. Okay. So, what kind of a reasonable timeline can we establish for giving folks enough time to get some language and details to flesh this out a little bit? Is, does anybody have a sense of that?
It seems we would need some language from legal to help us decide how much land you would need to be able to do something like this, or?
Attorney Bissonnet?
Yes.
I know there's, I know there's a lot in the queue in legal, and we've been putting in a lot of requests for various language- Um, and we've been putting in a lot of requests for various language development. Do you have any sense of an of a reasonable amount of time to be able to coordinate with planning and Jeff to come up with something in more detail based on the state guidelines and what we might hope to do locally?
There are some best practices ordinances that I'm aware of for ADUs that we can take a look at. Hopefully, hopefully short-circuit the process somewhat. I could talk to Mr. Burkhardt about that. But realistically, I think we're backed up and considering you're also taking up the budget, probably closer to the beginning of July, I would imagine.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so if we're continuing it to gather information and to if we're going to try to keep it joint, July is sort of a tough month because everybody goes on vacation and we're in recess and we only have one city council meeting in August.
Well, this isn't a big rush, so.
So maybe we should go into August after the city council meeting? Sure, although what do the what does the wisdom dictate? Counselor McGivern, do you remember when our August city council meeting, did we already said it?
We haven't said it yet, but traditionally it's the first Tuesday of August,
which would be August 2nd this year.
Okay, all right, so I would just suggest that many people will not be around in July and I'm not sure about August, but I'll defer to the wish of the committee members relative to continuing this in consideration of legal and Jeff in terms of their time too. How does September work for Jeff and legal? And I don't know, I'm asking Mike, but I don't know if it's Mike or Kathy, but I'm picking on Mike.
Don't consider it being picked on, thanks.
Is is September a better, Counselor Maldonado Velez, did you want to be recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say I'm wondering if we can just not to take it up on June 28th, but continue the public hearing. I mean, June 28th in case people do want to speak and then at that meeting we can decide because I the date for August, because, I mean, that seems pretty far away, so I'm not sure. Unless we do know what dates we're going to be meeting in August or September.
So you're suggesting June 28th?
Just to have it, yeah, to have it in the agenda. People want to come in and speak as it is a public hearing, but I think also just so that we can move along and then on the 28th we can, hopefully by 28th we'll have the future dates set in place for our next meetings. So it's easier for us to plan for the next one.
We may be able to shoot for that as a target date for a draft ordinance to committee, if that's any help.
Well, sure, so if that's a motion, Counselor Maldonado Velez? I do see a hand from somebody in planning, Kate also. But um-
Hi, yeah, um, or are you calling on me?
I was just.
Yeah, go ahead, Kate.
Thanks, um, it just, um, it feels to me, I'm obviously not on the ordinance committee, but it feels to me a little premature to be drafting an ordinance. I it I really feel like I would like to know more. There must be some sort of expert we can have come in and talk about this. I'm not sure exactly who, but maybe someone at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is working on this already. Um, I would just, I think this is a great idea. I'm not saying this to derail it by any means, but I'm I I imagine that there's just a lot out there that we could stand to learn from in this process. Not not only from an expert, but, you know, hopefully hearing more from the public.
Yeah, and I really appreciate our legal department trying to be responsive, but I know there's a lot in the queue that and we're going to push a couple of things tonight because they've been so busy. So maybe if we continue to the 28th and then we'll pick a date in September on June 28th to give time to get in more information and then when legal's drafting something, they'll have more to go from than this very broad discussion that we've had right now.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, okay, so I have a motion from a committee member to continue this hearing to June 28th at 6:30.
I also have Jeff Burkott's hand has been raised.
Oh, Jeff?
I guess, can I just offer this one item, or, you know, it's, I mean, don't we think that we should like perhaps bet this a little more before we start drafting something like? Maybe should the, you know, can the planning board take this? So let's just say you want to continue this till August. Maybe the planning board could take this and go off on their own to kind of work on a recommendation to then provide to legal at some point to then go back to you, but just to go right to legal with a thing, you know, obviously their busy their busy department and whatnot, where we can perhaps maybe between staff and the board bet some of the the online materials, talk to the PVPC or other and then provide something either to legal or back to ordinance before we go right to legal.
Right, right, and that's what we were kind of-
Yeah, well, I guess I was just trying to even look to kind of separate the meetings a bit.
Yes, which I think would be fine because three, four, and five public hearings in one night is-
And again, there's no rush on this.
A challenge. But would going to June 28th be too soon to be looking at for ordinance? You know, if if I'm comfortable giving planning more time if ordinance wanted to go to September, you know, to let-
I would ideally like a recommendation recommendation from planning and then taking that to as to a public hearing makes more sense to me.
Yeah, okay.
Very good.
So Counselor Maldonado Velez, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with, yeah, whatever is decided. I just I my intention with setting the moving it to June 28th or saying the June 28th day is just because I know we don't have another date set up going forward, so I know that when we continue the public hearings, we have to continue it on a specific date. So that was more my intention, June 28th. Not necessarily that we're going to have all the ordinance language or voting on any of those parts, it's just sort of like procedurally so that we can just keep this sort of meeting going. And then on the 28th, we'll decide on the August or September meeting. I think Counselor Givner just said, you know, it's not gonna, it's it's no rush on this and I do agree with Kate and Jefferson, it definitely needs to be more work to be done here, June 28th was more of like a, let's just start on that and then on that day we can just move on to the next one.
Well, if if I could ask the committee to check their calendars and let me know if August 23rd would work, that is the fourth Tuesday in August and usually we've been sticking with the fourth Tuesday every month. I was thinking people might want July off. So I'm-
I'm it I I would have that open, that's fine.
But if-
This 23rd?
Yes, that would be the fourth Tuesday in August. Make sure I'm looking at my calendar right?
Works for me.
Okay, all right, so is that your motion to continue to August 23rd at 6:30?
That's on make a motion to continue the public hearing until August 23rd at 6:30.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, so the public hearings continued to August 23rd at 6:30, thank you.
And would we be able to? Um, will planning have time to have some kind of proposal or some information about it for August 23rd?
Well-
Yeah, I think Sharon, 23rd looks okay on our calendar.
Uh, it's a little bit booked, but yeah, we'll we'll fit it in.
Okay, all right, yeah. We don't, we 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 hold meetings during July and August anyway, we have we have no recess. So I'll take a motion to continue the public hearing to August 23rd at 6:30 PM.
John, John, should we be continuing our public hearings separately to take in to take in more information? We can continue the joint hearing until August 23rd, but-
Well, I I, yeah, and I think if I understood Jeff correctly, it would give us time as a board to do a little research into this. Not necessarily have public hearings, but maybe to do our own research into it, is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so we be we continue the public hearing, Kate, but we would as a board, you know, discuss it further.
All right.
So, yeah.
Is that-
I just, like, if we're if we're gonna get, say, say we're asking somebody from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to come in and speak to us directly, um, that I I don't want us to have to notice another hearing, I'd rather have us continue.
So if we could continue it, maybe continue it just to June 28th to see where we're at. And then at that point, that way we can always make sure the end goal is to merge back with ordinance for the the 23rd.
We could we could go we could go either way. I mean, we could have people come in and speak to us at our regular regularly meetings too, but if you want to go to 28th for our public hearing and then can do for the 28th to kind of then dovetail with ordinance, we could do that either way.
Yeah, I would like, I would prefer to do that, I just don't want us to run into a situation where we can't take someone important's testimony because we don't because we've pushed the public hearing off.
Okay, that's fine. Do you want to make that motion, Kate?
Yeah, I'll move that we continue our public hearings separately to June 28th. I don't know if I can include in that motion that we will meet back up in public hearing with ordinance on August 23rd as well.
I guess we could do that, I don't know if anything, all right. Um, it's, so right now we're continuing to June 28th at 6:30 PM. Actually, it's 6:00 PM for planning. I think that's the motion.
Usually 5:30, but-
Okay.
Remember, Mimi won't be here.
Well, I won't, but or at least I hope not to be.
You won't, you'll be enjoying your vacation.
Uh, but-
But we can we can take testimonies for our members.
Yeah.
Well, if we don't have a quorum, that'll be a different issue, but.
Yeah, we should be able to.
So the motion, so the motion, let's clarify the times, is it 5:30 or 6:00 PM? Okay.
5:30, so it doesn't hold up.
All right, so the motion is, Kate, your motion is to continue the public hearing to June 28th at 5:30 PM?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second in that?
I'll second that.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Yeah, and to resume back with the ordinance committee on August 23rd.
At 6:30 PM?
6:30. Uh, Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Bernander?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Gotcha. Hey, motion closed, planning board, don't forget you have to come back over here.
I know, we're coming, we're coming back home.
We'll see you in just a few minutes, again.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay, I'll entertain, I'm sorry? Well, I'm not saying that's going to actually happen, but we don't have a city council meeting in July. You won't. I think somebody did tell me that, well. Well, I would say you have done your service to the community and thank you so much. But we'll cross paths in a couple more meetings probably, right? Thank you, good night.
Motion to take up item five?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye, right.
Aye.
Okay, so Attorney Dagnan, on this one, we thought we would have legal language by tonight, but I'm thinking we need to continue this?
Uh, yes, good evening, counselors, and yes, I really respectfully apologize. I had every intention of getting a legal opinion to you by today's date. I have finished the opinion, but I have not been able to get it to your body for purposes of review, which I think you'll want to have. So yes, I respectfully request, and I know, I'm sorry, this has been continued a lot. And I know June 8th is a lot, you have a big meeting there, but yes, I think continuing would be good.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to June 8th at 6:30. Motion to continue. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye. So this hearing is continued to June 8th at 6:30. Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to take up items six and seven as a package.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item six is to update the structuring of the city's law department. And item seven is that the city solicitor research how other law departments are set up in Western Massachusetts, how many lawyers does each law department employ? Are they full-time or part-time? Do they hire outside counsel or handle all legal matters in their law department? And we have received a report from the city solicitor relative to item seven. And we all have received revised draft language from our city solicitor, which I believe we received yesterday. So there's quite a lot of information there and so who is walking us through the draft revision tonight?
Um, Madam Counselor, I have just, I expected Lisa, Attorney Lisa Ball, to be present, so
Okay.
Uh, maybe if we can give her a few more minutes
Okay.
move on to another
All right.
agenda item.
We'll make a motion that this six and seven be tabled.
All in favor? Aye, so those are tabled until our city solicitor gets here. All right, so we can go to items 10 and 11 and 12. And I'd entertain a motion to take them up as a package.
Motion to take up 10, 11, and 12 as a package?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 10, order that the city council consider updating the demolition delay ordinance with changes proposed by the historical commission. Item 11, order that the ordinance committee meet to discuss amending the demolition order regarding historical commission review to begin the process once a property has been listed by the problem property group. The goal of this would be to enhance the possibility of preserving structures and to do so prior to extensive building deterioration, which then escalates cost. And item 12 is a communication dated 5/322 from Mayor Garcia, a letter regarding the historical commission proposal. So, hang on, bear with me one second. Okay, so at a previous meeting, we had come up with a structure and outline for what the revisions would be. And we have the update before us. We also have a letter from Mayor Garcia who has concerns about extending the demo delay beyond six months. Um, his expressed concern is that it will delay business development of particular properties if we are to do this. Now, um, we do have Paola here from the historic commission and I would just like to put a question out there because and I don't know if Mayor Garcia is here or not, I don't see him. But what I'm wondering, because the other thing that we discussed hand in hand was the historic commission having a seat at the problem property table. Um, so that earlier on, there would be an awareness of the properties and earlier opportunity to perhaps seek grant funding, other special opportunities for development. Um, so I guess for me, and I'm I'll certainly let other committee members or counselors weigh in, I'd be interested to hear from Paola how those two things might be married to get the historic commission at the table sooner, but not slow down business development if it's needed. So I would like to give Paola the floor unless other counselors wish to speak first. Okay, not seeing any, Paola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to say, I I'm I'm sorry, but and my name is actually Paula or Paula.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's very confusing the spelling, but I- Yeah, yeah, it's very confusing, the spelling, but I didn't know if to say something at the last meeting, but I figure.
Oh, well, then, okay. Paula.
Paula is good.
Okay.
And so a few, a little bit about the history. I met with Mayor Garcia a couple of days after I came to the ordinance committee explaining the ordinance. We met the Friday after. He was concerned we had an hour and a half meeting. And again, um, he has not, has not studied preservation much. I tried to reassure him. Obviously, I didn't take debate in high school, so I'm not a great convincer. But I was, he was, he was clearly unsettled and agitated and about not bringing business in, and what I was explaining to him is that, well, partially, there is one belief that development will come, and that now we have professional national company, like the one that is restoring the Alpaca Mill, that come in, restore big mill, they get national grant. I just wrote, uh, two letters for them for historic tax credit, so they know how to do it. So it's not a matter of, of, um, uh, not having enough money to repair an old, older building. It's about bringing in the proper developers that can do it. And of course, right now, there is interest in Holyoke. The other part that is very, very important is I tried to, uh, to explain to him that this is not a, an ordinance for specific part of downtown with crumbling building. It's for the whole city. So, um, right now, houses in the Highland are selling for a half a million dollar or more. And one of the things that we should think about preserving is people coming in and buying some of the smaller houses and tearing them down just to build a McMansion there, a very large house that will sell for a lot more the square footage. So it's very important to see for the whole city. The mayor was very concerned with, um, the church as, I think it was the church as 377 Appleton, which is, uh, La Iglesia del Día y la Iglesia, I think. But he kept saying, but what about the church on Sargent? And I didn't know of any church on Sargent. So, so I think basically he was concerned with true problematic property, finding a developer, and, uh, did, had not processed the whole scenario. After I left, two days later, he sent the letter to, um, to the council, and I have been going to the, um, problem property meeting, and I immediately asked their assistant to put me on the agenda to speak about the demolition delay ordinance changes. And in the last meeting, I was at the last meeting, and it was interesting because I said, you know, I'm very concerned and I don't want to offend you. One note on that, on that, uh, letter is the fact that the mayor said that we would, uh, cast down on that commit, on that group, and I wanted to say, you know, you're very well respected, you've done very good thing, and certainly, we never meant for this ordinance to be a criticism of you. I'm not trying to step on any toes, but I want feedback. And it was interesting because some of the questions that they asked, um, the gen, the gentleman on the, um, Bordeaux Bells asked, well, what if a building is crumbling or in dangerous condition? And I says, it's right there already in our demolition delay. Then it's the building inspector realm. If a building is really dangerous, it can be demolished. The building inspector raised some question about how the historical commission can come through if we put a demolition delay on a building, because it felt in the past, and this is a much farther away past, the historical commission tried to save some building, but couldn't make it through. And my answer to that was, well, it was very different time. Going to the problem property meeting, I know there are two developers that, uh, the group relies heavily on to pick up property, and they have. But I'm sure that, you know, it's a different time, more people are interested, people are moving here. I think even more developer could pick up other building. But what we decided to do at the meeting, um, they asked me to upload the document that you have, the letter that we wrote to the city council, and the new amendment, how they were drafted, and they asked to write comments on them. Uh, and so, you know, I was hoping we could postpone bringing the ordinance to city council until I can have the comments from the, um, from the
Problem Property Group.
Preservation Property Group.
Preservation Group, okay.
Yeah, and also, um, I hope I will have a second meeting with the mayor to go over things more carefully.
Okay, well, that sounds perfectly reasonable to me. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, Paula, how are you?
Hi, very good.
I just had, um, I guess some questions about process. The first thing that comes to mind is, is there a list of these problem properties? Clearly, there is. Is that true?
Uh, well, yes, yes, um, so, and that, so, um, I have a small list here, but, and also you have to think the property, the problem property list, it goes from anything from health violation to, uh, structural violation, to taxes not being paid. So, in, the list might be somewhat long. But what is interesting, by going to the meeting, I realized the sum of the property also, you know, there's, there's a lot of different problem. So sometimes it's not that the property is not structurally sound. One of the problems that was addressed was sometimes that the, the property had squatters or property, you know, or illegally, or rats infestation, you know, there's all kinds of things.
Okay, what I'm wondering is, um, what, if there's a if there's a reason to extend the demolition, I feel like there would need, there needs to be a parameter. So I'm wondering if there what designates something to be a, a property that deserves to be saved? What condition does it have to be in? What age is it? Does it have to be a certain architectural style from a specific era and on? I mean, when does it, you know, what are the parameters? Because we can all say, well, you know, my house was built in 1890, it's also a historical property, I guess, right? Where do we draw the line and say, you know, this building is better, better used by a developer who wants to bring life into the city and onto that block versus something that should be saved for what exactly?
So it's a very interesting process, it's a, it's a lengthy process. So property automatically come to the historical commission? Okay, let me start it this way. If a property is 100 years old on the National Registry of Historic Places at this, within a certain distance from a historic district, within a historic district, local or just national historic district, these are all criteria that automatically bring the property to the historical commission to have a demolition delay review. The moment is brought in, the moment the building inspector sends me the, um, requested demolition proper, um, um, the requested demolition permit, we looked at the, look at the property and we schedule the hearing. At that point, a member of the commission or designated historian, architect, start gathering the material. If you like, I can show you, uh, the evaluation form that we did for the 195 Appleton. So it takes days of research, we put together all the materials, and it's not just, it's not just whether the building has, you know, is within one style of architecture, is how many there are in Holyoke, how many there are in Massachusetts, what is the national history. The Merrick Mill, which is 195 Appleton, was interesting because, um, the building itself, uh, the architecture was very important because its twin, that is no longer there, had been named in several publications as the perfect slow burning mill, which was a certain kind of architecture of engineering for the inside of the mill. The outside was, uh, a Romanesque with the Italianite detail and window. But so we were able to go through all of that, uh, but, but there was huge, um, um, national history because that mill was, was one of the most important, uh, sets for, for national textile industry. And basically, it started in 1887 and closes in the late 40s. So basically, four generation of Holyoke had worked in it. It was the mill where first in Massachusetts, women were allowed to work third shift during the war. So there, there were so many stories, so it was very important. Then we went through the building and, and, and see, and we saw which building were in condition that could not be saved and partially collapsed, which building were very important to be saved within the, um, the landscape that is forming right now, that's a very important block. So it's between, uh, the first and second level canal and Dwight and Cabot. And, and that area, it's been, it's been repurposed, but it contains its industrial, its industrial look. So what we did is some building couldn't be saved, we were working with the developer. One building behind that was very more recent, attached to the facade of the main building, actually taking it down, it meant that would enhance the original building. And so we, we came to a really good conclusion that the smokestack, the boiler room, and the main mill building, as if they were left, would have been a very, very strong solution that still showed the industrial era, could bring in a developer and, uh, and really guard that area with, you know, the apartment building, gateway city art, the new affordable, um, um, elderly living facility in the Alpaca Mill. So kind of we made this very important decision, balancing history, balancing the landscape, and making that a decision.
Thank you.
I would just, I would just ask, and, and I'm not trying to be a pain, um, obviously.
No, no.
I love history.
I like to talk.
And I'm a, I'm a big architectural nerd myself, but I wonder how is the save, how is it, how do we determine to save something and what does, what does that entail? And how do we make it friendly for business? Because what I'm, what I'm hearing on the one hand is always, you know, there's, there's always the two extremes. The one side who wants to save everything and the one side who wants to plow forward. How do we merge the two so that we can save things while plowing forward? Because the opportunities that Holyoke is, is finding itself, um, entertaining currently may not last. And some of us think we should take advantage of them as much as possible, as quickly as possible. And so I can understand the concern for delay, but I also can understand the want for delay.
Well, you know, it's interesting to me because what I always say is that business is a very generic word. And, uh, you know, whether if we decide not to have the demolition delay extended, that will bring certain business. If we extend it, that will bring a different business. Uh, you know, basically, um, it, you know, bringing, you know, again, I was checking the price of pallets of, uh, of reused, repurposed bricks, vintage bricks at Home Depot, and it's not cheap. The price of steel is through the roof and it's hard to find. So we can certainly favor businesses that basically, um, make money out of scrap material. Uh, and certainly not, uh, notwithstanding the demolition delay will do that. Or we can, it, it, it needs how we brand ourselves as a city. Or we could, um, have, you know, look, and I think what we have been doing with, uh, the canal area and some part of the Upper World, we are looking like we're doing very purpose, uh, planning, and, uh, we care about, uh, the look of the city, we care about being green and not, not, um, honoring people with dangerous demolition. So, um, and that will bring different kind of business. So any, either decision we'll make will bring businesses, different businesses. The question is which, what would be more, uh, more, uh, more, uh, I don't want to say lucrative, but just more advantageous for our city to choose?
Thank you. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Chair Bacon, and Paula, um, first of all, thank you for sharing the pronunciation of your name.
Yes.
Because I've been struggling with that, even as you moved into my neighborhood for some time now, and I feel much more comfortable saying Paula, and I appreciate it. I did not attend in person the last meeting, but I did listen to everything that you said to the ordinance committee, both at the first meeting and tonight. I did read the mayor's letter that we received in between, and, and I do have some history with the demolition delay ordinance. First of all, I like the changing of the name from demolition delay to preservation of historic building ordinance. I mean, being positive about what the historic commission and what the city should be doing, I think is important, and I think that's a small perception, but, but a very important way of, uh, of putting out there what, what this is really all about. Preserving historic buildings is always important in our city, and, and I, and I favor that. And I did vote for the six-month delay, um, back, I think we're going back 25 or 30 years, but that doesn't matter, it's, it's important. At that time, we did discuss 12 months, I think we even discussed longer than 12 months, and there were, there were pros and cons for that. I, I do share, I think Counselor Givner brought up some good points, I do share the mayor's concerns. It's not just problematic properties that we're dealing with, it's not just properties that the city owns that we're dealing with. There are private properties out there that the historic commission, rightfully so, can, if, after having a public hearing, it issue a demolition delay for the purposes of trying to figure out of trying to figure out before the developer or business person does what they are proposing, that is there a way to, is, is to save this historic property? I'm in favor of that. I'm not in favor of 12 months because I think that could scare away some developers. I think most developers that are looking at historic property would certainly understand a, a reasonable delay to give the historic commission and the city and others time to see if we can work out a way to preserve the historical, uh, preservation of any, of any property. Um, Counselor McGivern made a good point though, is it's, it, there's no determination of what properties, you know, are gonna be, um, delayed and, and looked at and what properties are not. I, I was shocked at the lack of looking at one of what I consider an historic property in downtown Holyoke, the Old Bud, and there was no demolition delay for the Old Bud, although I know the building had deteriorated because the owner had, you know, one of the prior owners had let the property go, especially the roof itself. Um, six months to me may be too short, you know, if we want to talk about eight months, maybe nine months, there's, you know, there, think there's a possibility there, but 12 months I would not be in favor of. I'm not too sure about the 75 years. 75 years and two years will bring it back to, uh, 1950, being the fact I was born in 1955, I don't consider myself historic. Some people consider myself a dinosaur, but I don't consider that historic as much as that hundred year mark I think is. Uh, preservation of, of property, you know, that's a hundred years or older, I think is a good starting point. And I, I would just, I, I, although I do appreciate, and I think, you know, you know, Counselor Bacon made a good point and it sounds like Paula, you already took the initiative, you know, to join the, the, uh, you know, proceedings at an earlier, you know, point in the, uh, with, what the city does in terms of problematic properties. Uh, we, we used to call that, uh, a, a different name itself. And, and I think, you know, we, we, we certainly want to be positive about what, what we attempt to do. I, I know what I'm saying is, is no, uh, surprise to the historic commission and I don't mean it to be insulting to what you do or to what you're proposing here because I have the utmost respect for what the historic commission does. But I think when it comes to private properties and developers, I think we have to meet somewhere in the middle to allow the time for someone to rethink what they're proposing. And eventually, you know, if it doesn't work, that's the, uh, the nature of the, uh, the private, uh, private ownership. And I don't think the city can, uh, take it much further than the attempt. But I do appreciate it and I look forward to hearing from the, uh, the remarks from the other committee and, uh, certainly will keep everything with an open mind for the future vote.
Thank you. Counselor Maldonado Velez, I did see your hand up before, are you all set?
No, I'm, I can go thinking about it and share. Um, I just, I'm frozen, hold on. Sorry. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, I, I'm supportive of 12 months, um, but I do have a question around timing and I'm wondering if to the chairs of Paula, if she can go over the, um, 195 Appleton Street. Cause from what I'm hearing is, you know, the, the six month delay, I, I guess my question comes from a place of like, when does a six month delay, when does the developer get to start developing, whether that be not the demolition or whether they can start fixing stuff during the demolition? Um, cause, um, I guess right now, if the six month is actually not just six months, it's actually been longer than, um, yeah, that's my question, if you understand where my question is going.
And so, thank you, uh, Counselor Maldonado. Just to clarify, we did not issue a demolition delay on 195 Appleton, but we had three hearings which took three weeks and partially was about in dialogue with the developer and for the commission was to clarify why the building were important and why some building were more important than other. And for the developer to rework their plan, possibly talk to their investor and all of that, so that when they finally submitted a plan, it was a plan that was, uh, agreeable with the historic need, what we thought were the historic need of the city, so the demolition delay was never imposed. One of the things that's, that's interesting, basically it's the moment we vote on, on, on a building, on whether a demolition delay should be imposed or not, that's when the six months start. Then usually sometime it takes more time because, you know, there's a whole set of things that have to be done for the building commissioner to, to okay the demolition. But one thing that is very important is in the cases of building that are historic and are, um, structurally sound and they are considered clearly monument in our city, then six months does not give us enough time to make them into a single building, single block, uh, historic district. So when we impose the demolition delay, if the owner does not want to do anything, there's nothing we can do. In case of buildings sometime that are, uh, that could be repurposed, becoming apartment, becoming something else, uh, it's six months delay, again, most developer will wait it out. If there is a 12 month delay, it's true, some developer may be discouraged to apply because they wanna work fast, but gives a chance to this, for the city to find, uh, somebody who may wanna do every purpose of the use of building.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, my question was coming, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's, we are at six months now, we're not actually, you know, a developer comes in and wants to buy the property. The six months that we're talking about is not in actuality, nine or actually just 12 months with the public hearings with everything mixed in.
And you know, oh, I'm so sorry. Uh, what I, what I always recommend and I hope it becomes practice more is if a developer comes, you know, because, um, sometimes they ask question that don't ask the right question. They ask, is this property in an historic district? Is this property on the national, on the, uh, national registry? But, uh, those things mean something to a point. Um, and also, so, you know, if they would come in and say, this is what we would like to do with this property, uh, would it fit? Uh, you know, would you, would you see concern to issue a delay? Um, we probably, uh, you know, we would be able to give them a very detailed, um, very detailed, uh, uh, explanation of the reasoning, what we would do. Uh, you know, and a lot of people sometimes think that historical restoration means to keep everything absolutely pristine or put it back as it used to be. And, you know, that is not the case. And actually, when I was talking in front of the problem, property, um, group, I was of the preservation property group, I was saying, you know, um, this, this demolition delay really works in two ways. Once putting the, the delay on to really save something like Mata de Rosa, there was a monument that could have been meant into a single building historic district and the city would have had it. But on the other end, uh, there's a part where we have a lot of building that give Holyoke its identity because there were factory, there were mill and it's a landscape, it's the way they look and they could be repurposed. And we don't ask to, uh, to people to put them back exactly as they were, but I feel it could be a very good thing for the historical commission saying, no, there's no reason for this building to come down because it would alter so profoundly the landscape and the identity of the city. So let's find a developer that would do something with it, but keep it as it is.
Um, so thank you very much for that Paula, and we look forward to hearing the feedback from the group, the, um, and so what timing do you think, are you anticipating feedback from them soon or do you think it will take a month or?
Well, probably, um, I, I, I don't know, I would think it might take a month because there are, they probably, it's, the documents are already uploaded for comments.
Okay.
I can certainly ask their assistant to ask for comment for the June meeting.
Okay. So, um, I'd like to entertain, oh, hang on a second. Um, Counselor Murphy Ramboletti?
Hi, um, I just, I just wanted to thank you Paula for, um, all of this information. I'm personally just grateful for the opportunity to learn more because for me, it's not a black or white issue. Um, I was, for example, upset when, uh, Mata de Rosa was demolished, um, but I feel like even a year, more than a year was probably needed for something like that. Um, but at the same time, I can definitely, I work in economic development, I appreciate development and so I don't want to create any additional, um, barriers, uh, for new development. Um, all of that being said, you, I just wanted one clarification on one thing. You said that, um, the, you know, during that year timeframe, um, the, like we could find someone else who might want to develop that, uh, that is able to not demolish it. And I, I just curious to know more about who the we is, like who typically takes on that role? Is it the historic commission? Is it the city? Because the city's not really real estate developers, so I can't imagine that, you know, they'd be playing that role, but I'm just curious what in the past that's looked like.
So if you, um, and, and thank you, and thank you for putting such a beautiful picture up for yourself also. Um, but so if, if you clarify, one thing that I would like to state, and Attorney Deegan is here, um, I'm a volunteer, but I am on the city board and one of my big concern is that we don't cast a shadow on the city and if the action of my commission doesn't get the city sued. So every decision we take, we take with great gravity and, and great responsibility. So we are not a commission that is here to stop a project because we don't like it or because, uh, we just think that everything that is 100 years old should be safe. And I really want to state that. Uh, the other thing is, again, I feel we worked very successfully with the developer at 195 Appleton to find, uh, a compromise. Um, so again, um, for, for us to stop a project or to stop a, to impose a demolition delay, um, there has to be, uh, a clear, a clear justification from the historic point of view from the city losing patrimony.
Okay.
So that's the first thing that's very important. The second part is, um, I think you raised a very important point about how building will be marketed and I, that is not my department, uh, but I know the city, uh, has been looking at their process of writing, um, their, um, whatever they call, um, request for proposal, especially after what happened with Lynch. And personally, I, I and many other citizens raised so many questions on how that the request of proposal was written, which again, I hope, you know, one thing, if the demolition delay passes for 12 months, I hope that the city will work very hard and work with specialists to call for more proposals that really, uh, look for rehab or repurpose building and not so much to take down or whatever, but the call for proposal is very important.
Okay, thank you. And just in case anyone's still watching or anyone is interested tomorrow at the, uh, development government relations meeting, um, we're talking about the preservation, problem preservation, problem property group, preservation group, sorry. Okay, I'm done, bye.
Bye, thank you.
Bye. Okay. So, um, thank you Paula, and so I would like to entertain a motion to continue this to June 28th to give time for feedback.
So many.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, so we'll see you on the 28th with feedback from the group. Thank you so much Paula.
Thank you and good night.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
So entertain a motion to go back, um, to take items six and seven off the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so items six and seven are before us. Um, one, um, that sections two dash 152 and two dash 156 and two dash 158 be updated in our ordinances of chapter two, article two, division five, uh, based on new proposed structuring of the city's law department. And number seven, order that the city solicitor research how other law departments are set up in Western Mass. How many lawyers does each law department employ? Are they full or part-time? Do they hire outside counsel or handle all legal matters in their law department? Um, if the committee is so willing, we've received that information relative to item seven, I'd like to entertain a motion that that's complied with.
Motion to have item seven complied with.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, so now we have item six before us and we have draft legal language that we were provided an update to yesterday. We had a previous draft at our last meeting and, um, we have, um, Attorney Ball, our city solicitor with us. And so, um, maybe you could just walk us through the high points. I know you gave us the summary and I know you gave us the references and the revisions, um, already. Attorney Ball, if you would like to.
Um, let me just tell you upfront, I seem to have an unstable internet connection, so I'm sorry if you're gonna get an echo here. Um, so yeah, I think, I think the most important things to mention, um, some of the things that were raised in the last meeting were, um, anyone that would be doing any kind of outside practice, if it's, um, during the work week, it would be, uh, depending on who the attorney specifically is, it would be, um, to have consent. And I think there was, um, an issue raised as to, you know, not just a verbal consent, but a written consent. So we, we did add that. Um, also I think another concern raised is to not have the mayor just say what he wants the salary to be, um, which, which was already in there, that it would be, um, the mayor deciding the salary, the city council confirming it. Um, but we also added in by ordinance as well. Um, the other thing that we added, um, as per the committee's request, um, is, um, information on benefits. And I think I just added that in my, my email to you all. Um, there would be no sick time, um, there would be vacation time, um, consistent with, uh, two dash 42, um, of our current ordinance. Um, and also the issue, I think that was raised by one of the counselors about the work week, we also have, um, an ordinance that addresses that right now, um, that talks about the work week being Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. So I didn't really see a need to put that right into this ordinance as well, since we already have an ordinance that addresses it. Um, those are the highlights. I mean, basically we just put it into legal form. Um, I like doing it in this form, I think that we're doing now, which just shows, um, how it read before and how it reads now. I think, um, that's helpful to see what the language was before. I think it's helpful to everybody, um, to see how it read and, and how we're proposing that it read. Um, I think that's about it. The only thing I want to mention, and I think I've mentioned it to, to some of you, I think... The only thing I want to mention, and I think I've mentioned it to, to some of you, I think definitely at the last meeting, um, we did research, um, other law departments to see if they have similar language like this, um, that talks about prohibitions, um, of employees being able to take on any kind of outside work. We couldn't find any at all, and we looked throughout this whole area, there was, there were no other lot of, no other cities, I should say, or towns that have any language, um, prohibiting outside practice, but, um, despite that, I mean, I understand it's there. I, I think if we want to keep it there and we want to at least be, um, you know, have some flexibility to let lawyers do, you know, other things. Um, I think the way that this is now currently drafted and proposed, I think it's, uh, probably, I, I would hope would satisfy everyone. Um, there's enough safeguards in place now, um, to propose this ordinance to the entire city council.
Thank you, Attorney Ball. Um, and I, and I appreciate all the work you've done in that, on this, and I'm definitely in favor of having your department be much more flexible than it has been. Um, for me, I'm totally fine with having part-time people taking out, taking on extra work that could happen at any time of the day, um, but, and not looking even at your department specifically, but just some of the recent history and throughout this city. Um, I just, um, have a high level of discomfort around full-time people doing other private work during the workday because it would be creating an exception, um, from all the other departments that would be under the ordinance, um, except maybe in the case of the engineer. So that I'm a little stuck on, but that might just be me. Uh, so, um, I just, if we had a tight time tracking system even, I'd feel a little bit more comfortable, but we've got nothing. I mean, we've just got paper that disappears, and I'm not, again, pointing a finger at your department, I'm just saying, we don't have systems in place, um, to make it easy to carve things out like this. Um, I think we do have pretty good time off benefits though, so if somebody wanted to pick up a private case, I'm not in favor of prohibiting the ability of a person to take on a private case, it's just how do you mix, break up the day for a full-time person? That's what I'm stuck on, but, um, did, um, Attorney Ball?
If I can, I know Counselordane probably has some questions too, but I, I just, I want to say a couple of things in, um, response to that.
Yeah.
First of all, um, I think, I think you see, um, Kathy and Mike have been here since 6:30. Um, it's now 9:30 at night. Um, this went on last night as well, I was in this meeting last night, a, a finance committee meeting, I'm not in these meetings every night, but, um, we're not working 35 hours. I mean, we're getting paid for 35 hours, and I can tell you, Holyoke is the lowest-paid law department of any law department in this entire area, and we've been doing that research just because we, just because we want to know, um, just to try to make our, our, um, our department competitive, we want people to want to work for us. Um, so I want to know those things because I think, you know, money's important, um, how we're treated is important, I think benefits are important, and I know you mentioned benefits. You know, somebody that comes in new to the law department, you know, like myself, for instance.
Yeah.
You know, I've been a lawyer for 20 years, you come in as a new employee, you get 10 vacation days, that's, that's not a lot of time off, it really isn't.
No, no.
Um, I'm not sure what the answer is to that, but I, I guess I would respectfully disagree with, like, the benefit part because for someone, you know, who's been, and, you know, I think Kathy and Mike are in the same boat. I mean, we're not new lawyers, we're not just out of law school, like in our first job, you know, we all come from backgrounds, this just happens to be, you know, who you have in your department now. I understand we won't always be the law department, but, um, the law department you have now, you have three experienced
Oh, we-
lawyers with a lot of background, um, you know, and we work all the time, we agree with that. So I just, I'm just looking for people to have some sort of flexibility with some safeguards and-
So, so I guess my point isn't-
Want to come work for the, for the city.
Right, right, and I think certainly if somebody's working a full-time job and they're working the one to nine, like if Jeffrey's doing that tonight, and then he doesn't have a meeting, he works the different hours, I don't think anybody's arguing against the flexibility of those hours, that if you're here till nine or 10 tonight, you're not going to be here from 8 to 4:30 tomorrow. I'm, at least, that's not what I'm trying to say. The sense that I get from the way the language is written is that it seems like there's, like, it feels like a carve-out of time. It doesn't feel like a flexibility of time. So I, and maybe it's the way I'm interpreting it, because I'm not against somebody being able to take on a case, do you know what I mean? But I'm, but I'm feeling like this is carving out, like, either a day a week, somebody might not be there at all, or a half a day, every day of a week, and then to me, that's part-time, if you're not, do you know, I'm, maybe it's the way it's written that I'm getting stuck on, but I hear your point that people have to work flex hours or they're here 12 hours a day, and, and I'm not suggesting they should be. So, I don't know. I, I'll let some other folks speak, but I guess it, maybe it's how it's written that I'm stuck on more than the practical application of it.
Well, I, I guess I'm not sure how else we would really word it, because the way it was worded, um, I, I was just trying to work within the language that we had. I mean, without just taking the language out completely, like I mentioned, there's, like-
Right.
This language doesn't exist in other law departments that have both full and part-time people. So, I mean, some of the law departments are set up full-time, some are set up part-time. I, I couldn't find a law department that had this kind of restrictive language, and honestly, we didn't have it the last time I was the city solicitor 12 years ago.
And, and so-
It just-
So correct me if I'm wrong, but this is just a perception on my part.
I, I would think it, I, I'm not saying it is, but I, I didn't see this as, as a way for, for us to be allowing people to, you know, get away with not being there several days a week when you're getting paid full-time. That's, that's really not what the intent was, it wasn't to let people go one day a week.
No, no, no.
It was to allow, if, if an attorney wants to do something that would require them to go and do something between 8:30 and 4:30 on a, on a workday, that they're not going to be in violation of the ordinance. That's, that's my concern.
Okay, so if we had, for instance, just taken out the prohibition of being able to do any other work, it would have accomplished what you're saying, but I just, what I wanted to share was, back when you were the city solicitor before, I didn't have the perception that you were doing other cases. I mean, you were here all the time, you were at all the meetings, you were here, you were there. I didn't have a perception that you were doing private cases.
I, I wasn't. I mean, I was, I was certainly present. Um, I was there during the day, I was there at night.
Right.
Um, you know, it's, for myself now, I came in here on an emergency basis, I didn't really leave my practice, although I've not really been able to be at my practice because I've been trying to devote myself to this job.
No.
Um, but that, that wasn't really my plan last year, was to just completely abandon my practice.
I hear you, I do, I do. I'm not trying to be adversarial, so, um-
No, I didn't think you were. I just, I, I'm just, it's really, like, I'm just trying to set this up in such a way that it just, it makes sense going forward, not, not just for who's there now, but just, you know, for the future, who, who may, who may be in there, you know, 10 years from now.
Right, right. Okay, um, I see Counselordane has his hand up. Counselordane?
Thank you. Um, I've had really a chance to really go through the text of the changes, so, uh, I have a number of thoughts. Um, one is, if folks want to be full-time or part-time, I mean, that's certainly their decision. So if people want lots of flexibility and, and do other, like, substantial amount of work during the business hours, then they should be applying for the part-time position, which actually is quite lucrative. If we're talking a $40,000 salary, we're now going to give this person vacation leave, they're going to be eligible potentially for pension benefits, we're now going to give this person, uh, all kinds of medical insurance benefits, I mean, that's a huge cost to the city. Um, so that's, that's a pretty good gig for somebody who can now work doing their own full-time other job and do this on the side on whatever flexible schedule. I mean, that's not something we really allow today, and that would be, I think, is a huge thing. The other thing that I think we have relaxed, albeit it was done before I got here, was this whole issue of the residency of the city solicitor. We're now reduce that so that it's open to anybody, basically, um, can, can be now the city solicitor, and I'm not necessarily opposed to that in light of, you know, we want the best person for the job. Um, I'm big on preference for hiring for residents, I mean, I, I've pretty much been a strong residency supporter. Um, I got to be honest, some of my concerns is a city like Holyoke needs residency because it's held by many that, um, you know, it's a nice place to visit, wouldn't want to live there type attitude, and I've heard that, and, um, you know, they want to use us for our jobs, uh, but they don't want to live here and pay the taxes and be in this community. Um, and I'm, I'm big on the fact that I don't care how great love affair people claim they have for Holyoke, until you're here walking the streets, day in, day out, paying the property taxes, owning a stake in this community, or renting a stake in this community, um, it's not the same as traveling in from lord knows where. And, uh, that's not to say we don't get wonderful employees from out of town, we've got three right here just in the law department, but, uh, I will say, it's, it's still never the same, particularly for our department heads where we've had this residency, we don't really have residency for the rank and file. Um, I could go on all night on that topic, it's in many departments, it's way beyond just the law department issue. Um, we actually have preferences for hiring, and as soon as people use their, their, their preferences, they immediately abandon us. Uh, we see that wholesale, it, it's an abuse of the preference hiring system. Now, with respect to this issue of the part-time versus full-time, it seems that if people are going to have a lot of outside work, then, then they should go for the part-time position. If you're here full-time, you're here full-time, and you know what that means, that you're here full-time during the business hours, and if you're going to have a lot of work during business hours, then, then you need to be, um, you need to be, um, taking the part-time position and not the full-time position, because it's got to be such that your vacation leave for the full-timers has got to be, um, enough to cover, you know, if you have a once-in-a-while type of thing. Or you need to be really clear when you come in as a new employee that, hey, I had these five outstanding cases and I'm going to wind these down, and, and from time to time, it's going to cause me to do some wrap-up. And if you're transparent with us, that that's going to occur, then I think that should be built into your initial schedule, but that it's a wind-down, you know? Anybody would expect a lawyer in private practice, or maybe even working, um, in a bigger practice, might have some of those situations, but to say that, oh, well, we're going to do something special for the law department that we don't do for any other department, which is, we're going to now start allowing our employees to work during regular business hours, doing their other gigs? No, I don't think so. That, that's, that's fraught for problems. One, it's going to create a situation where everybody else is going to say, what, I'm not as good as one of the lawyers in the law department? I, I'm the city treasurer, I want to work as, you know, at a, you know, a nursing home, for example, and I, and I want to be treasurer on nights and weekends, maybe I want to do that. Um, maybe, um, I'm a cop, or how about a firefighter? Maybe I'm a firefighter and I want to run a bank, um, during the day, and I'll, and I'll be a firefighter, you know, whenever. Um, or maybe I want to do a whole sundry of things. Um, why is the law department so special that you guys can get out of that deal? We have, already have an ordinance on that. Um, what if I'm, uh, you know, a full-time elected official, and I, I don't know, maybe I want to teach a class every Friday at UMass? You know, should I be allowed to do that, even though I've told the people of Holyoke I'm on deck every day, 8:30 to 4:30? Um, this thing is going to just open a Pandora's box of problems that we don't need, and everybody's going to cut their own deals, and eventually what this is going to turn into is a situation where people come and go whenever the hell they want. And, well, my department head said it's okay, or, you know, Mayor Joe Blow said it's great, and I'm, you know, I'm Mr. Wonderful, so I'll do it, but this guy over here, well, he isn't Mr. Special, so he doesn't get it. You know, this is not, this is not in the city's interest. First of all, a 35-hour-a-week schedule is not the private sector, number one. That's a, that in and of itself is a pretty good deal, okay? Now, admittedly, present company excluded, obviously, you guys work well beyond the 35 hours, but people should be making sure, if you're a full-timer, you got good pay, and if we need to pay more, then we need to pay more. That's a different conversation, but to start saying, well, you know, three days a month, I'm gonna, I get every Wednesday afternoon off to go do whatever, no. Use your vacation time, um, but to just say, well, I can cook a deal with my department head that gives me this, this, and this off, no, I don't think so, because we're going to have to do that for all the departments, and I don't want to get us in a situation where everybody's rolling in here with their own private deals during regular business hours. Public employment and being on deck during the day already is, has a long history of people who have been time abusers. I mean, you can read one IG report after another of people over the years that have had problems, uh, public employment and being MIA. Um, I don't want to go there. I, it, it seems to me that the employee either does, one, picks part-time, I'm okay with having a part-time city solicitor, I've already said that, we used to have a part-time city solicitor, so that's an option, or two, be full-time and do the work outside of normal business hours, or, and that's for any of the full-timers, as long as it's outside business hours and it doesn't conflict with your city employment, nobody cares, right? And then if it's during normal business hours, you got to use your leave time. That's the private sector rule, that's everybody in America. What, what, what the hell is so special about Holyoke City Government that we don't have to take our time off? We can build schedules around people's personal lives. It, it doesn't work that way. In the private sector, they make you take your time off, if, you know, or whatever your arrangement is, uh, that's how it basically works. Um, I don't disagree about the point about two weeks for certain new employees, I think senior executive positions should be eligible for four weeks vacation leave, I, I would be open, that's not in this ordinance, but Lisa makes a great point on that. Um, I want to touch on some other topics in here that, I don't know if those just kind of secreted themselves into the, to the mix here, but the city council writes ordinances. This isn't the mayor sets the pay, subject to the approval of the city council. We set the ordinances. The way it's currently written, I don't understand, he can make a recommendation or she can make a recommendation to us, I don't know why we're changing the wording that says such salary as the mayor determines by ordinance with the approval of the city council? It's not like, well, he says $1,000 and it's yes or no for the city council, it doesn't work that. That's not the way we write law in Holyoke. No, we set the salary. He can make a recommendation to us, hey, make it 50 grand, make it 100, make it a million dollars a year, whatever it is, we set the salaries by order, and, and we do that for every department in the city.
Kevin, excuse-
That should change.
Kevin, excuse me for one second, because I just have a question about that. Is the city solicitor in the study in the ordinance with the ranges? Is, is the city solicitor position included in that?
It, it, it is, Counselordane.
So, yeah, so, so that's, that's in ordinance, so I think the intention was to be within the ordinance, because it already is, right? But the mayor would pick up to- But the mayor would pick up to, if it was a brand-new employee, up to the mid-range. If it's not a brand-new employee, there's more flexibility. It, within our ordinance. I just wanted to clarify that that position is in that cubby, correct?
They, they all are, actually. They're all, they're all in ordinance.
Okay, so, there's not a conflict there. That's all I'm pointing out. Thank you.
Well, well, I'm just making sure. This is seeming to say something somewhat different, though, that this is saying, let me read this. "As determined by the mayor by ordinance with the approval of the city council." That's kind of just not a good way to write it. It's really, we set the salary range, he gets to pick what's in it. I mean, that's, I don't, but it should say that. Maybe it's just bad wording, but that's.
So if there's just a suggestion to clean up the wording, I mean, that's easily enough.
As determined by ordinance?
Yeah.
Seems like the mayor's taking the information from ordinance.
Right.
What's the problem with that?
Right.
I just don't know why the change. This says, it says that, "as determined by the mayor by ordinance with the approval of the city council." This seems to suggest like he sets the number and we say yes or no.
Now, he determines what the ordinance says and, and says, hey, can we do this? Which, it seems like wrong.
No, but he doesn't get to say what the ordinance, yeah, he doesn't get to say what the ordinance.
Nobody thinks he says what the ordinance says.
So, it should just say by ordinance.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Which is what it already says.
Okay, great.
Okay.
So you're just, so, just to clarify, are you suggesting that we don't need a language change there? That it's okay the way it is?
Exactly. It's, we currently set the ordinance, period. And when we set the ordinance, we create a range, and he gets to pick. That's like, why, I don't.
Right.
The current wording is perfectly fine.
All right, so I'm just checking in, and we all agree on that, right?
Yeah.
Attorney Ball, we're all saying the same thing, maybe, here?
I, I, I'm not sure why this is such a big issue, to be honest. Like, it's, this was just, it's, it's the, it's the salary is in a range in the ordinance. The mayor decides at budget time what he's going to put in as his recommendation. And the city council can either cut it, or they can, they can say they agree with him. So, I mean, I don't think this is a big deal, but I'm happy to look at the wording and change it if there's something that's really not making sense.
All right.
I, I guess I just didn't understand why the wording was changed from what it is. That's all.
Not on purpose? If you think it was on purpose, it was just, it was just a matter of just writing a new ordinance. I wasn't really paying attention to keeping the wording the same as it was before.
I, I ascribe no, zero motive. I'm just pointing out these things. That's all. I do, I do read what's written. That's all. Um, one, my due diligence over here. Moving on. The other thing I wanted to talk about, which I think is kind of a big deal, is relative to acting positions. That was changed in here. I would refer back to a June 6, 2011 legal opinion written by Lisa, and I think we should follow that legal opinion. That's what the current ordinance is based on. And I would ask, when we wrote the current ordinance, and, and I voted for it, and, and helped lead the charge for that, I would like the Lisa Ball opinion followed, and this would be a change from the Lisa Ball opinion. So, this says that, one, a person under Mass. General Law Chapter 4161A, the mayor can appoint an acting city department head for a period of sixty days, up to. There's an emergency provision under 3131, which allows a thirty-day extension on that. Ergo, that's why this says ninety days in the current ordinance. Now, it says, in the current ordinance, shall act as the city solicitor for a period of time not to exceed ninety days. The new ordinance, if agreed to, would say, after the ninety-day period, the mayor will appoint or reappoint an acting city solicitor until the city solicitor returns, or a new city solicitor is appointed. So here goes the merry-go-round again, where the mayor can keep appointing, reappointing the same person. That's not allowed under current law. It's not allowed in the Mass. General Law either. And I wanna make sure that doesn't happen, because we, that's not a pretty process. Because the mayor is supposed to appoint people under the charter, and we confirm, or not confirm, in the case of one person I'm aware of, and that person's supposed to be gone after they're not made acting, not revolving door appointment. I don't know if Lisa, you wanna weigh in on that?
Well, I, I, I mean, again, I'm not trying to get around anything, or, or do anything inappropriate. I certainly know that I wrote that opinion whenever I wrote it in 2011, or whenever. I was there with, with Mayor Pluta. But I could just give you several examples, myself included now. I have been acting for a year. You know, I, I'm not sure what other alternative the city had for this last year. Certainly, if there was somebody else that could come in and do it, I didn't see them volunteering to come in and do it. But, I mean, we've had other employees too. I mean, it goes back to the same thing of what the earlier point that you made about residency being so important. Residency has prevented us from getting good employees to come in. I mean, we've been unable to fill positions because of the residency requirement. With the solicitor, with the DPW superintendent, I mean, we've had several examples of people serving for longer than the ninety days. So, I, I, I understand, I probably, I, I certainly said something different than my opinion in 2011, but it was more to give the mayor the flexibility that he actually needs to have, I think, at times. I mean, there's certainly examples where it's needed to happen, and it's happening now. So I guess inappropriate, I don't, I, I guess, I guess it's, it's not legal to keep reappointing people. But what do you do? Do you leave the position empty?
Hire you. That's the answer. Hire you. Why, why doesn't he just appoint you?
Well, it, now, now it can be, but, you know, up until, what, three weeks ago, that the special legislation hadn't been passed.
Right, right.
Well.
Madam Chair?
I don't wanna, I guess you get the point.
I do.
Now that this is, one, the ordinance should, should be consistent with state law, and two, this is old ground for us to go over, and we should be doing it the right way. We're currently, our law says the right way. The state law is the right way. Should we be following the law? That's nice. I like following the law. So, you know, hopefully now that that's the case, then he's going to take care of your situation, because we all think you're wonderful, and we hope he appoints you. So, certainly have my vote. I'll say it in advance of the appointment. He's already got one. But my point is, you know, I don't want this to open up, this is a big deal. And I don't wanna have a situation where the ordinance is doing something other than what the state law says. And I, I think that my concern is, if we were to allow this, it would allow the mayor to circumvent the charter, which says, the council confirms his appointment, he is supposed to make an appointment, and then we say yes or no. And whatever that decision is, good or bad, because we had a situation, you're well aware of it, where a person just kept reappointing themselves, and, and, with the mayor, and even though the council voted that person out, by law, never went away. And I don't wanna see that, allow that to go on. So I'm pointing that out in this language, that the current wording is okay. I'm willing to be flexible on this point. I didn't, I think it might be a little harsh to say that no other member of the department may be eligible to serve in that capacity on an acting basis. I would be willing to strike that out and allow the mayor to, if, you know, under the current rule, we automatically made the first assistant the automatic person. But after that, you know, he can appoint whoever he wants, you know, assuming they're qualified. But the reappoint part is not okay, because that's gonna put us back where we were. So, those were the big three. I think number two, I think is probably, if we're all on the same page on that one. So it was the acting, and it was the working during the day for the full-timers. I don't know, obviously, part-timers, it's not an issue. And that's basically it. The rest of the changes, I think, are okay. I can live with the vacation time. If everybody, you know, thought I was the Grinch about that at the last meeting, I'll, I'll let that one go. As long as, you know, it doesn't, I mean, we just have to be mindful of the whole thing with part-timers is this is supposed to be a savings from outside council. That's what we're doing.
Madam Chair.
Right, so, you know, because once you start saying, well, I'm giving you forty grand salary, plus vacation, plus it costs about fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars a month for the, uh, the medical benefits, you know, you're starting to talk some serious money. And, and then pensions. By the way, I just wanted to say, it hasn't been said at one of these meetings, but you take an employee, one of the things that isn't counted, since we started talking about everybody's not getting paid enough, do the schedule if you get a pension, just of, even if somebody's making a forty thousand dollar pension. Divide that by, or I, I should say, multiply that by twenty-five. And that's basically how much money you wouldn't save in order to equal the amount of money someone in the private sector has to save in a 401K to match that kind of savings. So, it may not show up in somebody's paycheck every week, but if somebody wrote you a check when you retire for a million dollars, that's compensation, okay? And that doesn't get mentioned enough around here, that everybody's really making, some positions are way more than that, okay? But you go and retire and get, I'm just trying to say, like, an average pension of around forty grand. That's actually a million dollars. And people in the private se, so that's an extra forty thousand dollars a year for, that you get for life. People in the private sector don't get defined pension benefits either. So, I just feel as we're talking about compensation and salary and all these things, I don't think people are really grasping the mathematics on that, too, that you're getting a salary for life on that. That's worth a lot of money. And it, it just needs to be considered as we talk about all this. So, anyways, thank you very much. Well, open to any comments or thoughts on those three big points. The full-timer, the acting, and the issue about setting an ordinance. Thank you.
I, I just, if I can, very, very quickly, before we move on, I just, I, I know there's been this mention of the forty thousand dollars and this being a great salary, and that would be the people that could do part-time. You know, the, the people that are working part-time, and I can tell you, Chicopee is, I, I keep mentioning Chicopee, because they actually have like an all-part-time department. They're making fifty-five thousand dollars as part-time assistants. Their part-time solicitors making sixty-seven thousand, five hundred, all to work fifteen to twenty hours a week. So, I mean, I hope forty thousand is gonna be attractive to bring people in, but we got a city right over the river that's paying a lot more than us for part-time work. As far as, you know, the mention of like the law department being given this great privilege of being able to take cases during the day and it not being fair to other departments, I, I just don't agree with that. We, the other departments have to come in sometimes at night, certainly. We see Tanya here, you know, we see other department heads here at times. You see the law department here every night at every meeting. We're always here. We're not working thirty-five hours a week. We're working all the time. I just don't think that, that it's fair to categorize us with, you know, and say that, you know, other city departments, you know, they should have that same benefit. Lawyers are just different. And I'm not saying we're better. I'm saying we're just, we're, we're in a different, we have, we have different things that we can do. There's different things that attract the lawyers to come to a law department. And as I've already mentioned, and I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, we are the lowest-paid law department of all of the law departments in this entire area. We are the lowest. So, I hope we do something about that, that we continue to pay people more and more, because, you know, we wanna keep people here. We don't wanna lose them. This is a small thing that I'm suggesting we do. I'm not suggesting people be allowed to go run and do a private practice. I'm suggesting there be flexibility with these employees that are working really hard and are working, you know, once we have this time in attendance, we're non-union. So we're, we're gonna be putting in our time and attendance. And I, I think it might be astounding to see the amount of hours that we're working every week. So, you know, to, to let people have the flexibility to, to do a case here and there when they need to, I, I just, I just don't think that it's a, a big issue. But, you know, that's my opinion. I don't, I, I, you know, there's a reason that I'm asking for this. It's not for myself. It's not for anyone in particular. It, it's to make the department attractive to come to. I, I didn't take it out completely, but as I mentioned, like, they're just, that kind of wording is not in any other ordinance in any other law department in this entire area. Hamden, Hampshire County, it's just not there. And we looked. We looked. We, we copied ordinances. We looked. We wanted to see, like, how do other people word it? We don't know how other people word it, because they don't have it. But that, that's about all I wanna say. Thank you.
Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
She's been patiently waiting.
Yeah.
Since nine-thirty.
Sorry, sorry, Counselor Givner.
And I've been waiting since nine-thirty to support you, Solicitor Ball. I would just like to say that the world is a changing place. I keep hearing all this, the private sector doesn't do this, the private sector doesn't do that. I understand benefits are very expensive. I've been on both sides of, of the coin, you know, seeing the cost of benefits, paying employees. I've worked at a bunch of different places in different regions around the country. And I've worked in different types of positions where I was full-time and flexible, so I know it's possible. I also see our city solicitors and our city lawyers, like, at all these meetings at night. It's almost ten o'clock. I've also worked since seven-thirty this morning, but I'm getting, you know, I, I got paid at a different job. I signed up for city council. That's different. For a department that works in excess of likely sixty, seventy hours a week, I don't think it's a big ask for their full-timers to request flexibility. If we really want people to work forty hours, and we have them punching a clock, and we're gonna start paying them overtime, that's a different story. But I don't see the big problem in this flexibility ask from any department where the employees work in excess of their forty, whatever, forty-three hours with, with lunch, or whatever the city does, if that. I worked for the state. It was thirty-seven-and-a-half-hour work week with lunch at forty hours included. Like, every place is different. And the reason Holyoke doesn't have the employees it needs is because we're not able to pay as much as, as other municipalities, and we know this. What I'm hearing a lot from us is that we want everything, but we won't, we don't wanna give an inch. And I think if we're not flexible, we can continue to expect to not have the quality of employees that we need. Our Solicitor Department obviously needs more people. And if they had more people, it would, that, that came in knowing that they would receive certain benefits and have some flexibility, then they wouldn't all be overworked, then we wouldn't see all the same people at every single meeting, every night, and every morning, and everywhere, all over the place, on the weekend, et cetera. So, I think we will be able to provide flexibility if we have more employees in the Solicitor's office, because it'll free up everyone to be happier, work less hours, be flexible, and still put in their full-time work week with the city. So, whatever that means, I mean, seeing you guys here at ten o'clock at night makes me think, well, maybe you guys shouldn't start working till two, three in the afternoon. That's not reasonable, because the city hall is open eight to four-thirty. So, if we need people to do things outside of the normal business hours, then we should expect to give them a little flexibility and a little trust. Not to mention that Counselor Jordan has a really good order on the agenda that's, that would track city employees and, and have a system. So, I think the city is trying to figure these things out, and soon enough, we'll be able to track people so that we don't have to pay a million dollars when they, when they retire because of hours that who- when they, when they, um, retire because of, uh, hours that who knows whether or not they took vacation over a million years. Um, so I think we need to be flexible, be patient with one another, be patient with our departments, work on the things that are gonna bring the city forward, like employee tracking, you know, digitally. And I think it'll all come out in the wash. But if we expect everything and give nothing, we're just gonna have upset employees who don't want to be here. And when they quit, we'll have no one to hire. Thank you. Counselor Jose Maldonado-Velez?
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. Um, I just first want to say, I don't know anyone, um, that works full-time and doesn't have some sort of side gig. It is twenty-twenty-two. I think the side hustle, the side gig, that's just a, a normal thing nowadays. Things are expensive. So I think it's the, it's almost a standard that if you only have one job, unless it's a very, very high-paying job that will take care of everything, um, then you're probably working two, maybe even up to three jobs. So I, I don't think it's not an expert, um, i- it's not fair to expect our city solicitors, I mean, they all went to law school. I'm sure they're law, I'm sure they're probably still paying student loans or whatever, maybe houses, children, whatever it is, like, they may have to have another side gig. If it's happening during the day, you know, I, I think, you know, we don't want it to happen all the time, but I think in these, the department should have flexibility, not just this department. I think as Counselor Givner said, I think departments all across, um, our city where, um, you know, people are doing multiple different things, different gigs, and there should be that flexibility, especially if they're staying solely. I mean, it's ten o'clock now, so I'm assuming if we're expecting them to do eight-thirty or four-thirty, we're giving them eight hours to sleep, eat breakfast, and then come back tomorrow and do this all over again. And for me, that's not fair. I think we are moving past this full-time meaning your life is devoted to this. That's not what full-time means. I think full-time, uh, things are changing. Full-time is you got forty hours, this department, the city, whatever organization is asking you to give this job, and as long as your job is being done, then you have your own flexibility, your own time to do other things. So I'm gonna point that there. I mean, I think long-term, and I mentioned this in the last meeting, I am a supporter of like unlimited time off and working from home. And I think that's a whole bigger conversation that should happen. Uh, but I think until we get to a point, I think, also what just Counselor Givner said, agreeing with, um, you know, Counselor Jordan put in a, a order around Muniz, which I think is gonna help us really actually really see what is happening as far as hours and how much time people are actually putting in. Because right now, we're just basing what we're saying, um, based on no actual data, because that's part of the reason why this other order is being put in, so to show what is happening with our hours and employees and everything in our city. So, uh, yeah, that was my point that I wanted to make.
Okay, so I'll be brief. I promise. But I am for having the flexibility in the department. We have Jeffrey, who works every night meeting that we have. He doesn't come in eight to four when he works one to ten. Okay? He works flex hours. What I thought we were talking about at first was flex hours. If somebody's working one to ten, I'm not thinking they're gonna work eight to four necessarily every other day of the week. I don't care what they do when they're not here. So my thing is, but, but what I'm finding myself uncomfortable with is carving out these hours during the day. I mean, if you're not here and we don't have a prohibition about what you do when you're not here, to me, the problem is solved. This is too many words. Like, you can have this with a written letter and da-da-da-da, blah, blah, blah. I mean, I'm, I'm a nurse, I'm salaried. If I'm in a situation where I have to be there all day and I have to work at night, so be it in my past roles. On the other hand, if I'm part-time and I'm working here and I work another job over there, who cares? Who cares? If I'm full-time like Jeffrey, I don't know what Jeffrey does when he works one to ten at night and then he has the next day. Um, you know, so to me, it's like a moot point. So it's sort of like, I think the other city ordinances are silent because they have a conflict of interest rule. They have personnel rules that stipulate whatever they stipulate in their city. And then other than that, they don't have a specific ordinance on it. So to me, if we just took away that you can't do something else, the when, if somebody worked one to ten at night and then they're off from, and they don't come in till eleven the next day, who cares? That's my position. It's just, I don't know, the way the language is, doesn't feel like it says that to me. But that's what I say. Like, we don't have language for Jeffrey, but that's how it works. Right?
Madam Chair?
Right, Counselor Jordan, and...
I think you're touching on a really, first of all, everybody made great comments. I agree with all of them. I would just say, that's an important thing. So if people are regularly like, you have every Tuesday night, you're here till ten o'clock, then the next day, or whenever, say you needed every Wednesday morning off to go do your other deal. No, that's totally fine. I'm, I have no issue with that. My concern is that whatever your schedule is, whatever that is, you work that out with the department head, that's fine. You can do that. As long as you're on deck for whatever that schedule is, but when, whatever that schedule is, you can't do your other gig during that time. Okay? But if you're here every Tuesday night till ten and you need Friday afternoons off, if the department head says that, and you go work your whatever on every Friday afternoon, no one cares. Like, that's totally fine. Like, we're fine. But what I'm, think I was hearing by some of this is like, you could work during your regular business hours, doing your other deal, which, that's the problem. But what I'm saying is, you've got a lot of flexibility on what the regular business hours, like, show us where you're giving us our thirty-five hours, and you can craft that with your department head and be given the flexibility so that you're okay. But whatever our thirty-five hours of your life is, that's for the city. Like, we get that because that's what we're paying you for. So I think we're, this, we're not that far off from each other on this discussion, because I think this totally could work. It's, I just don't want people like coming and going during like whatever that schedule you've committed to the city is. Like, that's our time for, for you. So I think that's your opportunity to have the flexibility you want. And the other thing is, there's some big changes here. Like, we've done no residency for the Solicitor, interjection of all these part-time positions. I think the answer is hire two part-timers, and that's gonna give a lot of support to the law department. And, and like I said, is if the salaries need to be higher to attract good people or retain good people, then, you know, we should be offering competitive salaries. I think we're all in support of that. So anyways, um, I don't think we're that far off from each other. I think we might be saying things in a different way, maybe. Um, if that helps.
Counselor Jose Maldonado-Velez?
Thank you, Jeffrey. And, um, I think part of the issue that we're having here is simply because our ordinance does lay out, or, yeah, does lay out business hours eight-thirty or four-thirty, which I think that may be what, um, what Trinball may be referencing, where it's like flexibility within those business hours that are eight-thirty or four-thirty, not necessarily business hours being your work hours. And I think that's where the issue may be. And I believe last time, I asked, um, Trinball around like, um, I'm someone in the office, and I, I'm, you know, as long as someone's in the office at all times, I mean, we can have a longer conversation as business hours. Realistically, if you're working full-time, you can't access city office at eight-thirty or four-thirty. So that could, you know, that's something else. But I, I think that's where the business hours versus work hours is what's got us sort of like maybe confused or in this sort of long conversation.
I think, thank you. And I tend to agree. If I can just make one suggestion that I think is very simple, that I think would fix a lot of this. Under our current ordinance, under two-dash-thirty-four-B, we have the hours of employment of all persons employed in municipal offices, except the Office of the City Engineer shall be eight-thirty to four-thirty PM, except blah, blah, blah. Why don't we just add Solicitor's Office and Engineer there? Because it recognizes, as with the engineer who's at almost every meeting and has to be outside of the office on regular office hours due to the demands of the job, that that is an exception. So if we carve it out as an exception, aren't we done?
It, yes, Counselor Bacon, except that I do think we need to at least then, if I'm hearing everybody right, eliminate the language in the ordinance that says nothing can be done between eight-thirty and four-thirty, Monday through Friday.
Agreed.
And, um, and I would just say, I a hundred percent agree that we need to give thirty-five hours. I mean, there's, I, I'm-
Nobody's questioning that.
That has to be. It's hard, it's hard for any of us to say this is gonna be our exact schedule because, you know, ordinance most times meets on Tuesday, but a couple weeks ago, it was on a Wednesday.
Right.
And, you know, finance is mostly on Monday, but, you know, certainly, you know, it could be another night. And sometimes we have things on the agenda that we have to be there for, and sometimes we don't.
Right.
Um, but I, I would say, um, to Counselor Maldonado-Velez, since I have been there, I never like to leave that law department unmanned. There's always somebody there. And if you're not finding somebody there, you should tell me. Because if, you know, one of us has to not be there for some reason, then we're making sure somebody else is there at all times. It's very important to me that we're available to city staff when they need us.
Right.
Um, everybody has my cellphone. I think a lot of people have Kathy and Mike's cellphone. We are accessible, and I don't think anybody here would say we're not. You can call me at night on the weekends. I answer the phone. I answer emails. So I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't ever say, oh, it's nighttime, I'm not gonna take this call. I'm gonna wait till tomorrow at eight-thirty or, or weekends. I just do it. I just do it because it's part of the job. But, um, yeah, so that, it's, I, I think if we just take the language out, and then I, I like Counselor Bacon's suggestion of adding that in, I think maybe then we're not, you know, trying to overcomplicate things with the, the whole written consent.
We're too much in the weeds because most of what we have been talking about is scheduling of a department director. Right? That's what you do every day with your team. Right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is now, and I know you'll, you'll vote on what to do, but, um, do, do you want me to create new language and send it back to ordinance? Or, okay, okay. I see Counselor, uh, Jordan shaking his head. I'm just anxious. I'm more anxious to get this going just because I want it to line up with, you know, the budget that's coming in, where we're asking for the part-timers. I just, I don't want there to be an issue.
Yes. We'll, we'll, we'll go to the eighth with it, but I think we can simplify it. And I think by adding in the exception and eliminating the restriction, I think we more simply accomplish what you want to do. And of course, leave all the part-time stuff in. And to me, the reappointing, appointing, whatever, um-
I'll take, I'll fix it.
All I want is an assurance from legal that we are within compliance of state law. Because everybody's playing games with these ordinances, no matter which way we write them. If they don't like them, they just ignore them. Mayor Morse didn't have a city solicitor for two years. So I mean, we can have all the, you know, we have many laws that aren't enforced. Right? I just want to make sure we don't write something that is in conflict with state law. And maybe we even reference state law and just say, we follow the state law on appointments. Keep it simple. Right? I mean, my thing is, I want to have a city solicitor that's a solid appointed solicitor. Right? But anyway, um, if that all sounds reasonable and we're all on the same page, I think we can simplify it, clean it up, and get it done on the eighth in fa- fairly short order. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, one final thought was, I don't think we want to eliminate the prohibition on doing outside employment during regularly scheduled hours. What, that, because that would be, that is the rule, and we want to keep that as a rule. But what we're saying is, the law department are gonna be given the exception along with the engineer of not having eight-thirty to four-thirty, Monday to Friday, as their regularly scheduled hours.
Right. It's not the office hours.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna be allowed to have different hours that you'll set. And what, but whatever your regular schedule is, you can't do outside employment, so don't put it in your schedule. That's how you get around it.
And that's the matter of scheduling between the department head and the staff.
Exactly. So you'll have the flexibility. So if you say, say the person says, I need every Tuesday morning off, then that's not in their schedule then apparently. Right? Because they're, but you'd have to show us how you're giving us the thirty-five other hours. The only problem is the department head's gonna have to be careful that, you know, it's not abused.
That's true of anything.
Well, because we had a situation where-
Well, we have, but I mean, let's not set the bar to the lowest, um, performance, right?
Right.
I, I, I still think that we need to do something with that language. Either we take it out or we, we, I, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with leaving it in. I just feel like it just opens it up to a problem.
Which place are we talking about specifically? Can, I mean-
I'm looking at two-dash-one-fifty-two specifically. I think it's, it might be stated elsewhere in this ordinance, but-
I'm, I'm referencing two-dash-thirty-four-C.
Oh, look, did, 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 should we come in and, no, 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 interfere with the reg- See, I, I don't see how the language in C doesn't let somebody do something unless we're saying they can't do outside work. It just says interfere with the regularly scheduled hours. So I'm not seeing where that ties the hands of the department.
I agree. It wouldn't if we give them the-
The only thing that ties the hands is A. A is what ties your hands. And if you add in Solicitor, then your hands are untied.
Correct, correct. I agree. But for everybody else, their hands are because they're on, they're on deck eight-thirty to four-thirty.
Right. And their office is supposed to be available to the public from eight to four-thirty. So-
If you look at two-dash-one-fifty-two though, it's saying the Solicitor, and I, I'm assuming assistants in the, in the subsequent paragraph, shall not take on the out, take on any outside work during normal business hours. I just think that could be a problem.
Change it to regular scheduled hours.
Regularly scheduled hours. Make it match the other.
All right.
And then it's all consistent.
Okay.
Right? I think we're there.
And then, you know, do it with, you know, Solicitor approval, right? As you, I think you were suggesting that anyways, right? For the regular employees and maybe with the mayor.
The Solicitor's the schedule.
If it's, if it's for the Solicitor. Yeah. Okay.
I think we're there. I hope.
All right. So I make a motion. What are we, can we table this until the next meeting? Should we wrap it up?
So I need a motion that I want, I think the things we just discussed should be in the motion because I think that's what fixes the big, long discussion we had, right? I, that's what I think it does. Um, so that we're gonna add Solicitor to the exception. We're going to make the language consistent between one section and another, that if it's outside of scheduled hours, otherwise no permission is needed as long as they can, because C doesn't eliminate the ability to do other work.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
That's right. Correct.
I mean, sometimes you-
Counselor Bacon, um, Counselor Bacon, for the next city council meeting then, um, we, we can, I'm assuming just file an order maybe in your name to, to amend this particular ordinance? Two-dash-thirty-four, because that's not, that's not really before you.
Oh, sure.
And then this way, maybe that could go to ordinance the same night then?
Yes.
And we can just take them both up at the same time and do it?
Yes. Yes. And that would do it, right?
I, I, I think so, I hope so.
I don't, it's, all right. I hope we're there. Thank you all. Oh, wait, we have one more agenda item.
Madam Chair? Just a technical question on that.
Right, right.
Is your...
Yeah.
Is it your intent to take this back up on June eighth?
Correct, but I have to entertain the motion and actually make it official.
So the question I have is, can you take this up on June eighth if it's referred to ordinance on June seventh? 'Cause we would have to have it on the agenda forty-eight hours in advance and it wouldn't have been referred to the committee in time.
Oh. That's a good point. But we are touching...
Well, you could, you could...
If we make you the exception, you're still good because you're covered under, you're taken out of the problem in A with the regular hours. And then we can fix the other one to bring it in concert after, but file it, fi, under my name.
Okay.
And if we have a timing issue, we'll just take it up later. It'll just be cleanup at that point.
Right, okay.
Right?
I, I think we can still, I think we can still put it on the agenda for, uh, ordinance meeting anyways. I don't think you have to have had it referred yet to get it on the agenda 'cause we're not gonna take it up until the council actually had referred it on the seventh to ordinance. Remembering the agenda in the open meeting law notice is, you know, a good government procedural thing. It's not like a rule of the council that you can't put something on the agenda that hasn't been referred there at the time that you filed the notice. It's that action will have occurred by the time of the meeting. So if you file the, the ord, the, uh, order tomorrow to go on the six, seven, the June seven agenda, you could file by next week the agenda for ordinance and, and say it's on that agenda. Be, and then if it doesn't get referred, it comes off the agenda.
Well, and in fairness, you had to reference it to tie this stuff together to create what we're doing, which you had done in your draft form, right? So, yeah.
I think, I think that will work, I do, I do think that will work.
Yeah, so Jeffrey, you're listening, so we will put this on the eighth agenda along with this draft. So we have the, so we have the motion to amend the draft legal form, adding the exception, making the language match to the schedule. And that's it, right?
Um, well, the acting position too, no reappointments beyond ninety days.
And that's current language?
Yes, I think what we, what I would recommend is that it says that, um, if the senior assistant city solicitor shall have acted as city solicitor for at least ninety days, then he or she shall be removed from that acting position immediately. Put a period there and cancel out the part that says, and no other member of the department may be eligible to serve in that capacity on an acting basis. It's just that person can't continue to serve.
Okay, so, so here's the thing. This, the practical problem that we have run into with this is when we didn't have the limitation and the reappointments continued, that was one problem because we didn't get to confirm. On the other hand, when we created this ordinance that said they cannot, well, so what they did and so what?
Yeah, well, so what is, I mean, if I...
As a practical matter, nothing happened and we still didn't have a solicitor.
Right, but if the city council wanted to play hardball, we could run into Superior Court, get a declaratory judgment, get an inju, I mean, it's gonna be like the needle exchange case, right? You remember when they all said, oh, Jordane's nuts and he won't win that? Well, Jordane won't win that.
But, um, yeah, let's just...
So, um, if, if we, if we wanted to do, to do that, I mean, we have, I want the law to be correct. Now, whether people violate the law is another subject.
That was the earlier point and thank you for reminding me that we wanna make sure whatever we're doing with the appointment or the reappointment is in compliance with the state law. So whatever language we approve is following the state, whatever that is. Right?
It's following, yeah, the current ordinance was written following the June sixth, two thousand and eleven Lisa Ball opinion and, uh,
Right, but...
Did what she told us to do and we did it and that's the current rule. So that's what I think we should keep following. Except, I think we made it a little bit harsh in that we precluded any other member of the department from being even the acting.
Well, I, so then you would have essentially, functionally, no city solicitor in that scenario.
Well, he would have to bring, or she, would have to bring in somebody else as the acting, just you can't keep reappointing the same person is the point. They get three months.
I, I'm taking your point, I'm just pointing out that it has happened over and over and over and over in spite of the ordinance. So as a practical matter, what I just wanna make sure of is that our ordinance is in compliance with the state law and if it is, then we do our best to follow the state law, that's all.
Oh, well, our current ordinance is compliant with the state law, it's modeled that.
So, okay, so that's on that point and then the rest, I think we're done. Is there anything else that anybody else sees that? Okay. All right. So the motion that I'm hearing is what I already said three times and that we're in compliance with the reappointments for the fourth point. And I think we're done here and then we'll get final form and we'll vote it however it goes to the council, which it may be debated for another hour there, who knows?
And, and we're gonna leave the current language on the salary?
The salary is by ordinance and, um, Lisa, unless you can put a by instead of an of or something that just makes it clear that we're going by the ordinance, 'cause it's by ordinance, that's all.
Yeah, it, uh, yeah, let, let me take a look at it. That's, uh, that was always my intent, is that it is, it is by ordinance, there's no other way to do it, it has to be by ordinance.
Right, just say salaries will be established according to ordinance.
Okay, great, which is what the law currently says. Okay, great, so I'll make a motion, with all that, refer it to the law department for them to do their draft with those edits.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Three ayes. Thank you very much, I'm sorry that was so long. Anyway, um...
Can I have tomorrow off?
Uh-huh?
I just made a joke.
Oh, I, I'm s...
I could have tomorrow off, that's fine.
I literally didn't hear you, sorry. Selective hearing, oh, I've been married a long time. Anyway. Motion to take up item eight.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Um, Counselor Jordane, that we adopt an ordinance that requires department heads and employees to electronically track immunis or other. Um, I don't have legal form yet, so we need to push this to June eighth, which apparently is getting bigger by the minute. So can I have a motion to table this to June eighth?
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to move that. I just wanted to ask one que, someone's working on it or is it, do I need to sit with the law department on any of this? Or do you have enough to draft something up, um, based on what I wrote here? Or does the law department need any assistance with this? Do you want me to like draft something?
I'm not sure whose plate this particular one ended up on. I know Attorney Dagnan has a couple, I'm not sure who got the immunis one.
I think I can address that, Madam Chair.
So can we have it by the eighth? Because I think this one, we really do wanna get it going and support our, um, personnel director.
Absolutely. Um, we've been consulting with Kelly on this, um, as well as the mayor in terms of the time and attendance that's coming on board with the new computer. Um, I think one of the issues is going to be whether this touches on any conditions of employment. City takes a position that it's management rights to implement it. But out of abundance of caution, I think we're gonna have Labor Council at least consider the implications of, uh, what this is gonna mean. I think, uh, as most of you know, we're in negotiations now with, uh, several unions for extension of the contract. So, um, it's an important time and we don't wanna, uh, really mess too much with the collective bargaining scheme we're involved in right now. Uh, so, um, I think it'll, it'll probably be closer to July first, Madam Chair, on this one.
Oh, okay. I know, um, there is movement on implementing it, so that's good. And I assume that will continue. But, um, I would agree, I'm having dealt not extensively with unions, but, um, I've never seen that not be recognized as a management's right to be able to track work time.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right, so...
It's just that we go on recess in July though and, you know, you don't think, Mike, we could have this at least maybe for the second meeting in June? 'Cause July is gone, right? We won't, we're not, so now we're looking at one meeting in August and...
If we could have it by June twenty-eighth, then we could move it and then it would get taken up in council in August.
Right.
Which would be really good.
We'll set that as a target date.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Unlike, unlike, Madam Chair, unlike the planning board, we, we think there's some value to actually having a draft in front of you while you're trying to, uh, edit and discuss the matter, but...
Well, we'll stay tuned, we'll stay tuned till August for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, um, so I think we haven't voted this motion, right, to send this to June twen...
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to draft it in the legal form and if they could have it back to us by June twenty-eighth, please?
Yes, and all in favor, aye. So June twenty-eighth, we'll look for that. Okay. And I think we've covered everything. Vice Chair, have I missed anything on the agenda jumping around?
No, I'm looking at it, it looks good.
Okay, thank you, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Thank you all very much.